All right, we'll call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll.
Here, O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZiel.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right. First, I would like to welcome everybody back into the building. Sarah, welcome to the council chambers for your first meeting here live.
Thank you.
And welcome all the council members that are here back. It's good to have everybody back. I got lonely here for a while. It's good to see everybody's smiling face. And welcome to all the people that have joined us live tonight. Hopefully, the numbers will increase as the meetings progress, as we move on into the future and try to get back to normal. So having said that, next up, we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. So as always, please, this is your opportunity to speak on issues that are not currently on the agenda. If you would, keep your comments as concise as possible. Please try not to repeat things that other people have said. If you are zooming in to comment, please unmute. And again, we can't see everybody that is zoomed in here, so when there's a break, just feel free to pop on in and we'll recognize you. State your name and address, please. But again, don't forget to unmute for those people that are present that would like to come up and make a statement. Just raise your hand and we'll bring you up to the podium. One thing I would like to see, I don't know how many people we have in here tonight, but we do have a very long agenda. If citizen comments start to go a little too long, we'll probably move the, we'll stop them and move them to the end of the agenda so that we can accommodate all the people that have business before the council tonight. So having said that, is there anyone that has a comment?
Can I just say to my reminder, too, Mayor, that if you can't unmute for some reason, press your reaction button on Zoom and raise your hand or do anything. We'll see it. Clap, thumbs up, whatever. We'll look and find it.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. Does anybody here have a comment? Any comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kristin Emerson. I live on Green Street. And first of all, I'd like to thank Randy for advocating for our curbs and gutters. I'd like to make, the meat of my comment is regarding items that have been placed into the utility bill and how approval for that happens. I obviously received a Golden Rule bookmark. And upon investigation about the initiative, I realized that this is not an initiative that was passed by the council, rather, one that was passed by the mayor as a personal agenda item. So at a minimum, this seems to be a misuse of, oh, my gosh, my mom is calling me. Sorry. A misuse of taxpayer dollars. So if this project was indeed funded 100% personally by the mayor, it stands for reason that any citizen should be able to print literature and enclose it in the utility bill. The part that's puzzling is that I can't understand how a personal initiative can brand an entire city without the vote of council. So I really urge council members to add this initiative back to the agenda and elicit ideas from citizens before, really, I mean, it's already plastered on the website, but to reevaluate. And I guess I request some transparency regarding exactly how taxpayer dollars were or were not used in every step of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments? Any other comments? Yes.
Thank you. How's everyone doing? Good to see everybody as well. My name is Andrew Hassan. I live here in Hudson. I'm not necessarily coming up just to make a comment, but to extend an invite. Myself, former Senator Patty Shachner, Senator Lena Taylor and I, and the Hudson Bridge Group, we have worked with the USDA Food Program. We have acquired over 1,238 boxes of food, which is going to help local farmers and also feed our community. And on the 28th of this month, I invite you, Mr. Mayor, and all members of City Council, I know we've extended the invite, to our police department and Chief Wiloms to come out. We will be up by the bridge on the 28th handing out free food to the community. There are no restrictions, no requirements. This is just something that we are doing to help the community and help local farmers. This will be starting in Glenwood City. So we will be out in Glenwood City helping them out first, and then we will be moving it to Hudson at approximately 1:00 p.m. But I do invite all of you to please come out and attend. I think this is a good way that we can all start as elected officials and as leaders in the community to start helping each other out. And it's a good way that we can start helping our farmers out. So it's a program, we are able to reach out to a lot of our influencers out in Madison and Milwaukee to help the community out, and they listen to our calls. So I would urge all of you and welcome all of you if you guys could come out and join us. I believe Chief Wiloms has accepted that invite and will come out as well. So we greatly appreciate that.
Sounds good.
That's what I have.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other, in the back?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Nancy and I live in Christiansen. I live in Hudson. And I was just wondering, talking back about the flyer that came in the utility bill, I was just wondering who made that decision and why it was in my utility bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify?
Sure.
So I know some folks from High Point want to talk, but do you want that later during the?
Yeah, if that's, I'm sorry. The discussion for the, I presume it has to do with the sign in front of the school, and that is on the agenda. So when that agenda item comes up, anybody that is here that would like to speak to that will have an opportunity to do that.
So I should clarify that, though, Mayor. Just, are we going to make that a public hearing, then? Because it is not, at this point, listed as a public hearing on the agenda. And we did have that conversation about, you know, if the council wanted to allow comments on certain agenda items, that we should probably set then that agenda item as a public hearing for a future meeting, so then everyone is aware that this is a hearing. And so not just those that kind of came tonight, but anybody might be noticed that they're going to be allowed to comment on it. I think that's probably the right way to handle that, if we want to allow comment during that time.
Like, when the comments come up during the discussion? Is the council allowing us to speak?
Um, all right. So Erin, I just want to understand, are you saying, are you, we have said that, that people, you know, citizen comments are essentially restricted to items that are not on the agenda. So what are you suggesting?
Well, what we had talked about before, because we have made a transition away from allowing citizens to just comment on any agenda item, was that if a council member felt that an agenda item should gather more public input, that we should then table that item and direct staff to post it as a public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, I tell you what, why don't we wait? We're in the middle of citizen comments right now. This will not impact or affect the ability to speak in citizen comments, because we're not allowed, we don't allow comment on agenda items anyway during this part of the agenda. So why don't we wait until that comes up on the agenda and we'll handle it at that point? Is that okay, Erin? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I just know that it just got brought up.
Sure.
Before we got there.
Okay. I appreciate you reminding me of that, reminding me of my age. Thank you. Again, anybody have any comments? I see a hand, but I can't see. Come on, please step forward.
Good evening. I'm Talia Tajima, and I live here in Hudson. In speaking, building on the other comments regarding the Golden Rule Initiative, I think the initiative itself is a wonderful thing. I think we all need to take that time in our lives to step back and treat others as we would like to be treated. With that being said, since it is a personal initiative, that was not approved by the City Council to be a part of the city website or to be promoted by the city, it does allow for the opportunity for other citizen initiatives to be pushed forth as well. And the Bridge Group does have one that they would like to present at a future date with our own bookmark. Since we are going to label ourselves a Golden Rule City, we would like to have the inclusion of we are an anti-racist city as well, to where when people come, they know that all races and backgrounds are welcome and included here. So that's part one of my comment. And the other is, I would like to also see added to a future agenda item, some sort of support for our Hudson Police Department to be able to look into hiring a community liaison officer. Having spoken to Chief Lieutenant Munich and Chief Holmes both, this has been something that apparently they've been wanting to have on board for a while, and I, as a citizen, would love to see that move forward and how we, as the Bridge Group and others within the community, can support that happening. We'd like to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Talia. Any other comments? Any other comments?
One in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, please. Behind the TV.
Sorry. Should have jumped up and down. Sorry. Hi, thank you. My name is Kelsey Janetsky. I live in downtown Hudson. Thank you for the time today. I actually want to bring up a couple of things that we've talked about in the past that haven't happened yet. So I requested a while ago, when I made a comment poorly, that I would like to see instructions for how to make public comment posted on our city website. That still hasn't happened yet. I think in terms of equity for our city, it makes sense that everyone knows how to do that and not just those who are investigating quite deeply and actually looking into state law, which is how I found out that I could make public comment. In addition, I would also like to second the request of a community liaison officer. I was in Woodbury a couple of months ago, and I locked my keys in the car, which definitely did not need an officer to come, and they helped me get my keys in my car. It was great. It was a really good interaction with someone associated with the police force, and I think that our community could benefit from that. In addition to that, I also received the lovely bookmark, and I'm really excited that our city has decided to adopt this initiative and allow public initiatives into city mailings, because I have quite a few initiatives that I look forward to promoting. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Kelsey. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from May 3, 2021, regular council meeting. Approve operators listed on the list sheet. Approval of the conditional use permit application for automobile sales at 1401 Gateway Circle, All-Star Mobility LLC. Approval of a conditional use permit application for temporary portable concrete batch plant at 2700 Hanley Road, Chipwa Concrete Services Incorporated. Approval of the conditional use permit application for garage height to exceed 20 feet in the garage area to exceed 1,000 square feet at 721 Orange Street, John and Susan Kazak. Approval of the certified survey map for 1541 and 1551 Namakagan Street, River Heights Homeowners Association. Approval of bids for the 2021 street maintenance projects in additional, in addition of extra work for the project scope. Approval of the letter of engagement with Bolton &amp; Mink for construction inspection services for 2021 street maintenance projects. Approval of the drainage and utility easement agreement at 112 Heritage Boulevard, J. &amp; Jacqueline Carey. Approval of the claims in the amount of $368,180.86. And approve the plans for specifications for the 2021 stormwater projects and authorize to proceed with advertisement for bids.
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Brock.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Discussion on possible action on YMCA Equity Journey Proposal or Other Options.
So possibly two months ago now, at this point, the council did receive a presentation from the YMCA on their Equity Journey program that they offer. And since that time, other reasons, the council has not returned to this yet. But now that it looks like it would be probably feasible to take a look at some of these options again, where staff is, you know, wanting to get this back on the agenda for the conversation about, you know, we never really did a follow-up on that proposal, but also really discussed, you know, potentially other options as well. You know, staff was not, you know, when we had the Y come in, we were doing it as, the Y is one of our community partners that we have locally that offers something like this, but we're not saying it's the only option out there. As we discussed when this was talked about a couple of months ago, because of the cost, we would have to seek proposals from other firms. But also, it was discussed earlier in the process about the city doing something like this more on their own, where we would, you know, potentially create our own sort of committee and let that committee sort of decide what our next steps would be, which, you know, I don't want to say what they would be. But that's also an option that hasn't, you know, been explored yet either. So I guess at this point, what staff is looking at is, how would the council like to proceed with this? Do they like the idea of an outside organization coming in and doing some work? In that case, we'd be looking at creating a request for proposals. Is it something that we would like to try to look at that was maybe more in line with what Councilmember DeZiel was talking about originally, which was more of a city commission committee, staff that would be appointed with citizens that would provide guidance on how we should proceed in dealing with, you know, diversity and things like that? Or something else? You know, we really don't know. So that's what I think we're looking for tonight, is that kind of discussion and then some potential direction on how the council would like to proceed, if they would like to proceed with something like this.
Haven't seen any other proposals. I think we should start with more proposals. And I'm not, I'm not sure that it wouldn't be better for us to have our own little meat commission with our residents to find out what direction to go. But based on this, I think we need to look a little further out, find more, more options.
I think before we put it, before we put it out for a request for proposals, I think that it would be helpful to have kind of a sample proposal, just to see what it is that we're going to be looking for in the proposals.
What are we trying to accomplish?
Exactly.
So can I, can I go back to our February 15 meeting? Because I, I just want to share the piece I wrote for that meeting that got a 6-0 vote that I think had us kind of on the same page. And I think the Y proposal, although interesting, is very expensive and I think not really workable right now. So I'm just going to read this statement. So I listed three reasons why we need a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. And I think this is important, it's an advisory committee to think about that. One, local government should represent all people and safeguard their rights. Additional input regarding diversity, equity and inclusion would benefit our leadership as we work to better meet the needs of all citizens. So we would benefit, right, from getting that advice. Number two, Mayor O'Connor has worked to address concerns related to creating more civil discourse among differing opinions through the Golden Rule Initiative. A Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee would build upon the initiative by expanding respect and understanding toward all people in public policy and city programming. So again, I think the slant I'm looking for is, how do we do better public policy and programming? Number three, presently, we are reviewing and establishing the City of Hudson's comprehensive plan and public input from a diverse population can help us formulate a stronger and more inclusive community during the upcoming decades. So I saw it as a long-range thing. Then I listed six reasons for how Hudson would benefit from having a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee, and they are as follows. One, increase business and tourism activity by promoting a safe and inclusive environment for all residents, businesses and visitors. Two, as Hudson evolves and our population becomes more diverse, this committee will help promote and celebrate cultural awareness. Three, increase citizen participation in government and local activities by all people. Four, feedback and advice from the common council and the City of Hudson staff on creating and implementing more inclusive public policy and programs. And then five, access to more grants or other resources to bring about positive changes in Hudson. So the actual motion that was passed, I just think the language is important, that we passed 6 to nothing, said, motion is to direct city staff to write a framework to establish the vision, mission and goals of a Hudson Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee and bring it back to common council. At that point, it was within four weeks, which is what Erin was referring to. So in my mind, what I'm really primarily looking for is writing a framework to start another committee, this Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee, and getting it up and running. And in my mind, it's, we need to hear from more people of color. We need to hear from religious minorities. We need to hear from voices that aren't around this table, and that that would be great advice for us. So I don't know what they would all do, but I think I'm looking primarily for us to figure out and write a framework for that and come to some kind of agreement. Now, I don't have the framework tonight, but I think that it'd be, maybe with Erin's help and the city, and maybe, maybe there's a couple of us that work with it or something, to come up with some kind of framework we could bring back, maybe in a couple of weeks to say, you know, is this a starting point? We've also looked at, I know Erin had provided us with examples from other cities, so there's a lot of other cities that do have this sort of thing out there. You know, we're our own experience, right? So I would just like us to seize the day, sort of, and come up with some kind of workable framework that we could get a committee going. But to me, it's primarily advisory, and it is going out in terms of, like, I think tourism as well and making us more inviting to all people. So I don't know if that's helpful, and I apologize. You guys have never seen the text, because I read it at the last meeting, so you've never seen the text, so.
I, I wasn't at that meeting when it was discussed. I was here as a citizen, but I decided I should probably reach out to Chris and get a better understanding on the 90,000. Actually, 30,000 is for an internal audit, for lack of a better word, and the remaining amount is something that maybe we could see about getting grants or donations to make that happen. My concern with not bringing in professionals to help us is that it won't do it justice. And, you know, it certainly is not my expertise, and it is certainly something that needs to be done right. And so I, I would be more on the lines of wanting to get some more bids if people don't feel comfortable moving forward with, with just the Y. I'm afraid if it just is a committee, we will fall short.
Again, I guess, what are we trying to accomplish?
Well, Randy, here's, here's kind of what I'd like to see. I'd like to see us establish, you know, we've got a park board, right? We've got public safety. I'd like to have a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee.
That's. To do what?
To give, to give us advice on policy, to promote inclusion in the city, to make us more inclusive with tourists, to make sure that we're looking out for all people in a sense, to work on possible grant pieces. I just see it as nothing but helpful for us. And I agree, I agree with you, Sarah, that we may not have the expertise, but my thought is, once we get this committee, let's empower them to step forward. So if they need resources, they can, they can ask for resources. Personally, I'd like to see each council member probably appoint two people from their district who are, who would fit well on this committee. And write a charter for kind of what, what their scope is, what their mission is. But I want to get them going, because my, my, my sense with the Y piece is, we're going to wait and wait and wait, and we don't have the funding, or we're going to put out a RFP, and we're still not going to have the funding. So I don't, I don't want to make this contingent upon funding. I want a contingent on mission. And the mission I see is that we need advice from people of color and religious minorities in this city.
And respectfully, Paul, I, you know, how do you, you're saying, are you saying that the City of Hudson has a problem, that we're not inclusive enough? Because every citizen has the right to come down here, right now, go on Zoom and express their concerns and comments. It's our job to take that concern and comment and work it, work the problem, find a solution. And now you, what you're doing is you're, it's almost as if we were abdicating our job as an elected representative and to have advisors of a committee tell us what we should be voting on.
We don't know, Randy, what we don't know. And to be quite frank, as white people, we don't know a lot of things about other people's perspective. We need the thinking of other people to help us govern better. So I'm seeing, I'm not seeing this board as having, it's, it's not replacing the council, it's giving us better advice and information so we can be a better council.
But why can't those citizens, just like us, we all stepped up to run, other citizens come into the door and they present their, their situations as they are? Everybody's entitled to do that.
I get that, but.
You know, I just, I want to, I agree that that is an option, and I think Hudson is a fantastic place to live. And, but we're hearing from folks that it's a fantastic place to live when you look like you and me, and that maybe even coming and taking a stand and making a, using their voice at the city council, it's hard enough when you do look like us at this table. And imagine, I can't even begin to imagine what it's like for somebody who's not like me, because I know how scary it is for me to do that. And so I think the message is that we're doing a good job, but we can do so much better and really making sure that we are having those welcoming communities where people feel part.
There's a lot of people that went before us that worked hard to make this community the way it is.
Absolutely.
And everybody wants to come and live and work and play in. You and I had a conversation. I've seen firsthand exactly what you guys are talking about, and I take somewhat offense to you guys saying, because we don't look like others. And there's a lot of people in this community that will. It's a sensitive topic. It certainly is.
And that's why I think we need experts helping us.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but we have to identify that we actually have a crucial problem.
You know, if I could interject here for a second. First of all, I'd like to get back to what Paul said. I'd like to get back to what Paul asked for, that was approved by the council unanimously months ago, right? We have never given that a chance. That has never gotten a chance. I personally, I mean, there are a couple of different ways that we can do this. I think that to have a committee, so perhaps advisory, the word advisory is misplaced or misused or not, but I think what I envision, Paul, is in the context of just one of the committees that we have, that does bring recommendations to the council, whether it be the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, the Parks and Rec, the other committees that we have where we do have citizen participation. And that's kind of the way I, I view what you wanted to do, but we need to get some type of form around the skeleton that you've proposed and, and see what that would look like. And I think that we need to give Paul an opportunity to bring that forward so that we can take a look at it. As far as professionals are concerned, if we find that, if we do go down that road where we start out with our own committee, again, quoting Paul, every community has its own experience. And I would like to focus on our experience with the people in our community. And I agree that if we're going to do this, we definitely need to be bringing other people, people of color, people that are affected by perhaps what we don't see. I think that it's been the, some of the things that were successful were the Voices in the Valley and representing different minority groups. And I think that, that people like that might be willing to step forward and, and volunteer. So I think personally, we need to give Paul's original idea that was passed unanimously an opportunity to be presented to us with the meat on it that you're looking for and see what, see what happens there.
I'd like to see that, for sure. But, you know, you've got to identify the problem before we can solve the solution.
I think that would be part of what they would do.
Yep.
Well, and I think that that would be part of what this proposal, this request for proposals would help with, too, would be identifying where we're at, what, and that's how I envision this. this Equity Journey Program is, an evaluation of what we're at. For example, I asked Erin, how many people, how many employees do we have who are minorities, people of color? And he thought about, and he said, I can't think of any. And so those are the kinds of things that need to be brought up and discussed. Is it because we're not, you know, people feel uncomfortable even applying to the city because they're different from the rest of the people who are working here? Are there other issues that we need to understand? And so I, I'm happy to advocate for either, either solution, you know, as long as we start moving in a forward direction on this. Paul, if you want help with fleshing this out, I would be happy to help with that.
That'd be great.
The one caveat here is that we don't have a lot of staff.
Right.
And I would, I would ask that you not lean too heavily on staff to do this. I think the groundwork, the heavy lifting, if you will, probably needs to be done in conjunction with staff. I'm not saying staff should not be involved, they absolutely should be involved, but I would, I would try not to put the majority of the onus on them. I think that we need to try, take the ball and run and see what we come up with. So, anybody else?
I would just want to throw my hat in the ring to Paul, whatever help you need there. I'm a little bit late in coming to this, but I've been meaning to reach out to the COVID Task Force about this conversation. So as much as I can help, I just want to throw my hat in the ring, Paul.
Thank you, Bill.
Anybody else?
Do we need a motion?
No, there's, no, we're just going to go back to the original motion unless somebody else has another motion, a different motion they'd like to make, but otherwise, we're just going to go back to the original motion, and we'll leave it with no action being taken on this. That's okay.
Just let me reiterate, I do support what Paul's trying to accomplish, but I just want to make sure we have identified the problem before we have a solution.
Good point.
I hear you.
And Paul, I will definitely get you some groundwork information that you can, you know, enjoy some bill as well, it sounds like. So I do have some of that stuff that we've, you know, we worked on before, that I'll kind of clean up a little bit and then get to you for some comments, and then we can go from there to have it ready for the next meeting.
That sounds good, and just, I guess with open meeting law, I probably should just work with one other council person. I'm assuming.
Yes, we'd have to make sure that Erin handles things.
Any, two?
Yep. And also, it would be, you know, I would be sending you something for, you know, comment or markup, and it would be, you know, each of you responding to me individually, not as a group, sort of thing.
Yeah.
So we would, we would be avoiding trying to do anything like that. It would just be, here's an idea, do you have some comment on it, back to me, and then I could do some updating.
So Erin, would it be enough, I mean, would it be okay for me to be part of that process, too, or is that too many cooks in the kitchen?
I think it may get difficult if we have, you know, four council members working on it.
I'll wait.
Yeah, I think that just keeping it to a little bit of a smaller number, and even though we will not be allowing the council members to communicate to each other, you know, as part of this, it'll basically just be responses back to me, I still would like to avoid having a quorum involved.
Right. What if Joyce and I kind of get something going, we'll give it to Erin, and then they can go through Erin for markups or something, and then, okay.
Yeah, you can run everything through Erin.
If I could make a comment, the, Randy, in addressing your concerns a little bit, the, I look at it as the demographics of the world are changing hugely, immensely, and they're going to continue to change at an increasing rate. How does that affect Hudson? Can we stay the way we are, or what do we need to do to take advantage of that change?
I think we're good.
Good? All right. Unless there was objection, we'll move on. Discussion and possible action on infrastructure management plan. Anybody need to go to the bathroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council members. If I could share my screen, available to me right now. Is everybody able to see my screen right now?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, so tonight, I am presenting a summary of our infrastructure management plan that staff and the Public Works Committee in particular have been working through for the past, I don't know how many months now, since probably last summer, and we're to a point of being able to move the discussion on to city council and the community at large. So first piece of this is just what is the infrastructure management plan, and what are the kind of results of it? And then moving on, not tonight, but at the next council meeting, we'll be talking about how to fund what's in the project, some options involved with that. So just wanted to let you know, too, that I'm not looking for any formal motions tonight, this is kind of more of informational, you know, there's a lot of information in here to get that out to the community, out to all the city council members, so you can start digesting it, ask questions, and hopefully we can move forward with implementation at some point. So, so I have an infrastructure management plan. First of all, essentially, I like this quote from Ben Franklin, "By failing to prepare you're preparing to fail," and I think we've, as staff, we've kind of seen this in the sense that, you know, a lot of our infrastructure is not in good shape, and obviously the results will kind of say that, but I think a lot of that has to do with just not having a plan in place that has a good idea of where we are and where we're going. So that's kind of where we're at right now, to identify where we are and hopefully plan for the future. So things that are included in the plan, pavement condition is kind of the most obvious in front of you thing on a daily basis as you drive around town. But other things are in there, like curb and gutter condition, missing locations, et cetera, sidewalks and trails, and underground utilities, kind of all pieced together to make up our city infrastructure. So first thing, pavement condition, how we measure that is something called a paster rating. It's a one to 10 scale that shows how much pavements have deteriorated. So just to give you some example, a 10 is the highest rating we can get, essentially that's a newly constructed, newly paved street. So some examples, Mayor Road, the lead development, our Hillcrest Drive, that was just finally paved last, sorry, the final surface of the pavement was paved in the past couple of years, so that'd be kind of where we're at with a 10, and kind of moving forward, you don't actually have any 9s existing right now. But an 8, you're starting to see some cracks, but otherwise, the pavement is in good condition. What you would be doing here is begin sealing the cracks, you could do a preventative seal coat on top of it to make that pavement last longer. Seven, you're starting to see kind of some more cracks, maybe some down the middle of the road where the two halves of the road meet, but still, the pavement is in decent condition, here's where you would still crack seal and seal coat for longevity purposes. Excuse me, six is close to our major street rating, as I'll show in a minute. What you would do with a six road is seal coated, or in some cases, do a mill and overlay, mill and overlay being, take the top layer of pavement off, pave a new layer on top. Starting getting down to a five, that's where you definitely would do a mill and overlay to extend the pavement there. A four, you're starting to see more cracks, some alligator type cracks starting, so what you would do here is either you could do a mill and overlay, depending on the condition and what's going on, or you might need to essentially start over the pavement, call the reclamation, or reconstruct the road. And then it keeps going down from there. Three, you can't really mill and overlay it anymore, you're kind of needing to reclaim the pavement and start over, or reconstruct the road. And then obviously, two and one is kind of the same thing. So by the time you get to a one, you're, you're in pretty bad shape, and we do have some one rating streets in town. So here's a chart of the last time we did a paster rating evaluation in town, which was 2019. Just for what it's worth, we have to do them in odd numbered years, so that would be coming up this year as well for us to do. The average paster rating for major streets in town, so major streets being your Crestview Drive, Cooley Road, Carmichael Road, you know, those kind of streets in town is close to a six, a little under a six. The minor streets, so everything else essentially would be a five, close to a five, doesn't include alleys or city-owned parking lots and that. You can see our kind of bell curve here, that most of our street conditions are kind of around that four to six rating there. So just for what it's worth, a lot of our streets are in that mill and overlay or reclamation status there. And when you get, you kind of want to keep the streets as much in a seven, eight, you know, nine, 10, if you can, kind of rating, so that you can do more cost-effective maintenance strategies like seal coats and crack seals. By the time you start getting into mill and overlay, or reclaiming or reconstructing your road, it gets exponentially more expensive to do that work. So essentially, this is kind of the purple line on the graph there, is kind of what you would want to see as a realistic type of curve, I guess you could say, for street conditions. So essentially, it shifts that bell curve over to the right more so, so that you're in less cost maintenance mode, rather than more, excuse me, more cost maintenance mode. And then by the time you get down to one, you're talking about, you know, essentially grinding up the street and turning it to gravel until you can do something with it. Public Works actually just did that up on Bridge Street last year, just because it was getting too hard to maintain, so, for what it's worth. So kind of here's what, here's what we look at for a, the length of time that a road lasts. The red line on the graph is essentially if you did nothing to a street, how long could that street last? It's essentially like 25 years or so, if you did nothing to it, until you're really at the point where you can't really use it very well anymore. That blue line on the graph is kind of what the maintenance of the street, you know, if we were to do the seal coats and mill and overlays and stuff, how we could stretch that timeframe, that life of the road from, say, a 25-year mark all the way out to 60 years, so that we can be doing things more cost-effectively and using our money wisely. So we're looking not to go from where we're at today to everything is perfect, 10s all around, that kind of thing, because that would be ridiculously expensive to do. But really, we want our proposed average to be more like seven or eight, so that we're in that better, less, or more cost-effective area of pavement condition. Going on to curb and gutter, we can classify curb and gutter as good, good condition being less than 5% pore sections, so pore sections being where the curb is heaved or settled, or the joints have deteriorated, et cetera, essentially it looks like a new curb, I'm sure you've seen one, it's in good shape. Panel replacements, so that would be sections of curb that have between 5 and 50% pore sections of that heaving and all that kind of stuff. So we'd be taking out pieces of the curb and replacing it to make the overall curb system function for drainage better. Full replacement would be where essentially the curb is so broken up or heaved that it's no longer useful for conveying the drainage that it's supposed to be for. And there's also areas in town where we're missing adequate drainage, particularly old town roads that never were ditched very well, this is an example from River Ridge Road that doesn't have ditch on one side. And then there's also areas where it is a rural section, where it without curb and gutter, but it does have a ditch on the one side, so that's obviously fine. So we can put together maps of all this stuff, you can kind of see, and not expecting everybody to digest all the little colors on the map here, but you can just kind of see what we've come up with is that, and rate, you know, where full replacements needed versus panel replacement versus it's in good condition, that kind of thing. Moving on to street surface age, so at some point, it's no longer cost-effective to keep just doing the maintenance on the road, even if we wanted to follow that blue line on the graph before. At some point in time, the pavement below the surface just wears out, essentially, even if you do maintain it really well. And so a well-maintained street, the average lifespan is about 60 years, like you kind of saw on that graph before. If it's poorly maintained or not maintained, it can be a lot less than that. So just for reference, here's some streets that are either currently approaching or overdue for surface replacement, so these streets are not ones that we want to keep maintaining because they'll, they'll break up over time. Moving on to sidewalks and trails, so the city did a sidewalk evaluation in 2019 that identified some problem spots, tripping hazards, cross slopes, deficient curbs, ramps, that kind of thing. This is just an example of some maps that we have of those deficiencies that we're wrapping into the infrastructure maintenance plan. And then utilities, so you think about it, utilities obviously are infrastructure, but you also need to coordinate the utilities below ground with the surface above ground so that you're making the most cost-effective choices for projects. So utilities need to be kept in good shape or else they'll break, obviously, over time, just everything breaks, as much as we wish it didn't, over time, we do have to replace stuff, so, you know, water mains can corrode, they can puncture, sanitary sewer lines can get full of roots or break, you know, break up, that kind of thing. So here's a map of the utility ages that are in town. So the yellows are essentially approaching replacement age. The oranges on the map, there's not very many of them, but they're at replacement age, so 100, 120 years old is what it's called replacement age. And then red are streets that have utilities that are over 120 years old, they're very overdue for replacement. So with these streets, what we want to do is only spend money on these streets to kind of limp it along until we can get to reconstructing the whole road with the utilities underground. So other factors with utilities, you know, materials are a big thing, so cast iron water mains are brittle and susceptible to breaking, want to make sure that we can get those out of the ground before they start breaking. Sanitary sewer and storm sewer, old clay pipes are susceptible to damage from trees and are brittle. Our sanitary sewer comprehensive plan identified many sanitary sewer mains that need upsizing for future growth. We're tackling one of those this year with the Highway 35 project right in front of the wastewater treatment plant, but there are many more in town than, they've identified different years that, that those improvements need to be made to make sure that we're able to keep up with growth. Water main looping, making sure that there's sufficient flow to all areas of town, and then pipe sizing, so some pipes are just too small to accurately function, particularly four-inch water main, and sanitary sewer that's six inches or less as well. So putting it all together, so you add in the pavement, the curb and gutter, sidewalks and trails, utilities, mix it all together, bake in the oven for 20 minutes, and here we, where are we at? So we can get a map of currently due maintenance and reconstruction. So the red being that full reconstruction all the way down to the utilities underground is what's needed, the yellow would be surface reconstruction, so that's talking about replacing the pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalks, that kind of stuff, but not the utilities underground. Purple would be a full-up reclamation, so essentially can leave the curb in place, but you need to replace the pavement with, it's past the point of just milling and overlaying it, but you need to, but the curb is still in decent shape. The teal line would be a mill and overlay, so taking that top layer of pavement off, putting a new layer on, and then the green line would be a seal coat, so that would be kind of the least intrusive maintenance, because the pavements are still in decent shape. So with that, putting it all together, here's an estimate of currently due or overdue maintenance and reconstruction activity costs, which is an overwhelming number, $127 million. So a little bit of where that number comes from, that includes surface costs, street pavement, sidewalks, curb, et cetera, storm sewer, water main, and sanitary sewer reconstruction costs, kind of all lumped together, also includes, you know, trails off of streets, that kind of stuff, alleys. It does not include retaining walls, as we'll discuss later on tonight, depending on what happens with that discussion, that could add to this number. But kind of let that sink in, it's a lot of money. So how do we tackle that, essentially, is kind of where we're moving forward from today, but if we don't tackle that, that $127 million just goes up as things aren't addressed. So if you think about it, you know, not everything's going to be like this, it kind of all progresses towards the yellow. progresses, uh, towards the yellows and reds over time. If you don't address it, then that gets more and more expensive. So, uh, just to give you some idea of our average funding, uh, that's about 1.3 million dollars, that includes major projects in the past few years, uh, so that's not every year is on 1.3 million dollars. Uh, so the time to clear out the existing backlog with that funding level would be essentially a century, that's not including future needs as well. Obviously I would say that's not a good, a good way to go about things. So like I said, yeah, future needs aren't shown, so the, the colors tend to get towards the yellows and reds in the future if we don't do anything about it. Uh, it also doesn't show the sanitary sewer upsizing that needs to happen in 2040 or something like that, and, and other things that we've been identifying in the, in the plan. So over time without maintenance, like I said, we kind of slide down that, that red curve, uh, towards things that are more expensive to do. Looking at it another way, that, that bell curve shifts to the left and it shifts towards things that are exponentially more expensive to do. Uh, and you can kind of see that over, uh, just over time, the average street ratings that we've had in town from 2013, uh, you know, the, all streets are in the blue, uh, the average rating has gone from about six and a half, uh, in 2013 to, uh, estimating in 2021 to about, about a five. So that's, you know, eight years it's gone down, the average has gone down about a point and a half of, uh, of our average rating in that. Equates to more cost to have to, to fix that, so we don't want to keep sliding, we want to keep, we want to go up from here. So, uh, that being said, what to do next? Establish the funding level plan, uh, so how much are we going to spend per year to get ourselves out of the hole? And then establish funding alternatives and mechanisms, so what, how do we collect that money to be able to, to fund the plan, whatever plan we choose? So that is, uh, coming soon to a council meeting near you in June. Uh, so not going to talk about all this stuff tonight, but just want to let you know what's coming up. So with that, that's a lot of information. I know, uh, probably have lots of questions, I'd be happy to address any of those questions that we can tonight. Yeah, so open up for any questions.
Dean, um, the 127 million dollar price tag right now, I am hoping that it includes, but, um, suspicious it doesn't, the cost of the 11th Street Bridge as well as the interchange at Carmichael and 94?
Uh, it does not include the 11th Street Bridge. Um, it doesn't, yeah, I don't, I don't believe it includes the interchange work, that would be the city's portion of that, of that. Um, it was essentially, I was looking at is just kind of where we're at today with the, the conditions of stuff and, and less so the, uh, you know, capacity related type things with it, it's kind of, uh, yeah, more of a condition rating.
Um, just, just so people know, I mean, that's, and then sometime in the future, we don't know, 11th Street probably in the not-too-distant future, the interchange, I mean, we're still looking at a big price tag there. So we need to keep that number or those numbers in front of us also. Anybody else, any other questions?
I mean, just in five years, that's tw- if we did it, uh, funded it for 20, for five years, it's 25 million, in 10 years, it's 12.7 a year.
At today's cost.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's, so it, it'll be a big commitment.
Yeah, I guess just to chime in on that, uh, when we discussed this at Public Works, uh, we're kind of looking at kind of more of like a 30-year timeframe on this, uh, so you'll be seeing that in the next, uh, in the next portion of this, but we, we realized that that's a lot of, lot to, lot to have to deal with in a short period of time if we want to condense that timeframe. Uh, so we're kind of looking at it over more of a generation than, than immediately, so just wanted to point that out.
How much of that 127 million is, um, sanitary sewer and water reconstruction?
Yeah, good question, Joyce. Uh, I actually just, just looked up that number today and it looks like it's about 11 to 12 million dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dean, I want, not a question, but just a comment that I want to thank you for the thoroughness and the amount of work you put into this long-range study because I think it's a roadmap for the city. And I don't know how we're going to fund it or when we're going to get there, but I think what you've done is really, um, made us all aware of the, uh, severe amount of work we have to do with infrastructure, so I really appreciate your, your detail and your explanation on this.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. I, um, I've been interested in this information for several years trying to, wondering just where we're at with all of this and, um, what, uh, what we have to do to get Fillmore Street fixed and, uh, um, I, I see we've got a lot.
Anybody else?
30 years is 4.5 million. No other projects get done.
Okay.
Well, and I think that's part of this too, is what we want to show is that we're, first off, we're not alone. Almost every city that you're going to find is facing these very same issues, um, and so, but we want the council to be fully aware of what the issues are, and then when we come back with the financing plan, we're not saying we're going to be able to address all this. We have, I mean, we understand that we have to be realistic as well, so what we're going to do is, you know, try to lay out some options and a plan to, at least get pretty close to where we want to be, um, using some different funding sources and, you know, we'll, we'll be, like Dean said, we'll be bringing that back basically next meeting to have, have some more conversation about it.
There may also be some federal money coming with the infrastructure bill on our own, so...
Anybody else? Dean, once again, thank you on behalf of the council and staff for all the work you put in. Uh, you're, you're unbelievable with numbers and getting everything into a format that we can all understand, so thank you for that, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Reg.
Thanks, Dean.
All right, discussion, possible action on approval of plans and specs, authorization to go out to bid for the City Hall maintenance and remodel project.
Yep, so I'm trying to, I'm just, I got a ball screen screens here too. Um, so basically if the council members, as part of the CIP process, we approve, um, $500,000 for work, um, basically at the City Hall and Library. Majority of that work is maintenance work, but there is also some, um, updating work as well. So, um, if you look, um, in, in your agenda, we have kind of a, a broad-range summary of, of the work we're going to be doing, um, and so if you look at the main topics, we're looking at doing, um, some redesign work at both the council chambers and the reception desk area. The council chambers work is to, you know, basically turn the council chambers into a real city council chambers with, um, you know, permanent seating for the council, um, improving our technology, uh, improving viewing for the council and the audience of, you know, presentations and things like that. So we'll get into that a little bit more here in a little bit, um, to walk through what, what we're proposing for that to look like. Um, we're going to do some updates to the reception desk area, that will be, um, basically putting in some permanent, um, security features, um, taking out some unnecessary kind of space in that reception area on the second floor and, and making it just more, uh, more efficient for what we need there. Um, we'll be doing some security upgrades, so that would mean that, you know, right now in City Hall, it's kind of, some doors are locked, some aren't, um, that we, and the doors that are locked, we have kind of those punch keypad things, so we'll be moving to the, uh, basically the electronic key fob system that we currently have in the PD Library and Public Works and, and things like that. So updating the security, um, for the, uh, for City Hall, um, and then we're going to be doing, um, some exterior, exterior tuck pointing work, um, as well, um, with the brick in the building. We're going to be fixing that leaking, uh, roof, uh, in the cupola area, we're going to do some HVAC improvements, we're going to do, um, interior painting, carpet replacement, we're going to be replacing or creating, not replacing, putting in ADA compliant door hardware, um, you know, kind of things like that. Oh, another one is that we're relocating our server. So right now the server's actually located in one of our staff's offices at City Hall, um, not an ideal setup, and, um, so we're going to be relocating the server to the lower, uh, first floor in City Hall now that that's open, um, so we'll be doing that work. We're going to completely rewire City Hall with the IT. Um, for IT, uh, we don't have, um, updated, uh, wiring for technology and things like that in all of our rooms, and the ones that we do have are, I think for most part outdated, so we're going to be basically rewiring, um, the IT for the whole building, things like that. So we originally budgeted the $500,000 for this work. Included in that original thought was doing some, um, energy efficiency work, which was mostly focused around, uh, retrofitting LED lighting and then also, uh, replacing fixtures in our bathrooms with the touch-free fixtures. But in taking a look at that, we think we can actually get a better price on the work if we include more city buildings, um, which not only will we get a better price on the actual work itself, but will make us eligible for more, uh, rebates and things, so we're putting those on hold for right now. But everything included, um, which would be the projects that we're putting on hold, um, the construction management fee, the architect work that we had to have done, some of those sort of things, we're coming in at about 638,000. Um, as far as our total funding available, we have the $500,000 in the CIP, and we also had 155,000 carried over from the last CIP that was going to be put towards some of this very same work that we put on hold until we can do it all at once. So even with the, the, so basically we have, uh, enough cash available on hand to do all the work that we have proposed. Um, and again, this is only our, basically our engineer's estimate, we still have to go out for, for bid for all these projects. So part of what tonight is, is not only improving the, the projects themselves, but also authorizing, authorizing Mark and Johnson to go out for bids on the project. Um, and so basically, um, what we'd be looking at is seeing the project starting sometime after the Fourth of July holiday, so we'd be having the council approve bids at the, uh, Second June meeting, and then, um, the contractor can start anytime after that. Um, and then we anticipate work to be completed by the end of September, if not sooner. Um, during that time, we may have a, uh, two-week window, we'll have to close City Hall just because of all the rewiring we'll be doing, but we'll see, we're going to try to work around that. Um, but we do know that we'll probably have to move, um, one, if not two, council meetings up to the new, um, fire, um, fire station building, um, just because we'll be doing work in the council chambers during that time. So, um, so with all that, the, we do want to show you, um, uh, the plans for the, uh, City Hall, or City Hall, City Council Chambers, and so actually our consultant just told me he got kicked off, but he got kicked, he got kicked back on, so I think John's here now. So John, if you're here, if you could share your screen and put up the, the plans, um, for the council chambers? There we go.
Now, Aaron, if I could ask, are there any council members here that did not see this at the finance committee meeting?
I don't think Sarah was here.
I was. I was, I was hiding back there.
Anybody not see this? Just in the interest of time, we've got, we've got a number of items here and a number of people in, in attendance that we need to get to.
Okay, no problem with me, then everybody's seen it. We'll take any questions.
I'll move, we approve the plans and specs and go out for bid for city maintenance and remodel.
Okay.
Yeah, motion of second, discussion. All those in favor? I'm sorry.
What I was going to say is I, I have no problem with working on certain portions of City Hall, but I, as I said before, I don't see the need to, I, to upgrade the council chambers other than the wiring piece, so I, I think it kind of sends the wrong message to citizens that I'd rather focus our money out there, the streets and the public services, than in here where I think we do pretty good work around the table, so...
Anybody else?
I like that idea that Paul shared too, I'd be, I'm fine working in this format,
I think we lost volume on Zoom if someone's speaking.
Uh, were you done?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Sarah, Sarah had also, it's just kind of voiced her, I don't want to speak for you, but opposition to the format for the council chambers, I believe, right?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion's approved. Becky, did you get both those?
Yep, sure did.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Uh, discussion, possible action on conditional use permit application for Hudson School District at 1501 Vine Street. So I think this is the first time this issue has, it's been worked on at, uh, at the planning commission, I think it's the first time, and it's before the council. So if we could get is, uh, the school, I see Nick here, uh, superintendent? Uh, are you making the presentation for the, for the district? Welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry it took a while to get to you.
No, you're just fine. We are no strangers to long meetings.
Oh, we have a crowd here, I know that, I hate having them have to sit through all this, but...
Uh, no, we're, we're good. So, um, you, you all have a copy of our, uh, conditional u- use permit application, um, and, you know, what I'm going to do is just hit, hit some of the highlights on there. We did run and have our, um, oh, sorry, I need to hit the button. There we go. Um, uh, we did run all of the different, uh, neighborhood meetings that were required to, sent the official mailings, we include that in our conditional use permit. Uh, we did go through with the public hearing with the, um, uh, planning commission, and then, uh, the planning commission then, uh, voted 7-0 to, to recommend approval. Couple things I want to touch on with our sign, um, so some people ask, you know, about the size of the sign, and, and one of the things it tell you is, anytime you put anything outside, it shrinks dramatic, dramatically. I mean, it looks, you know, might look big on paper, but then you get it outside and you're like, boy, that's not quite as big as we thought it was going to be. You know, hence our, uh, video board on our scoreboard, we thought was going to be quite a large video board until you put it on the other side of the field and it's not, nowhere near the size we thought it was going to be. It was 11 by 22, uh, on the, on the video board. And so, you know, it's important to have the sign a reasonable size so it's easy to read, um, and, and not a distraction that way. And so what you see on the screen is, uh, basically a rendering of what the sign would look like, you have the, the main front view, uh, it would match the aesthetics of the building, it would be both limestone, uh, panels, and then also, uh, the metal facade would match the metal facade on our building, so it would, uh, it would fit, uh, in with the, the existing conditions. Um, at the, the planning commission, uh, meeting, we were asked to move the sign, so originally, if you can see on your screen, I don't know if my mouse shows up here, originally we had the sign put, uh, right here, right by our main sidewalk going in, um, and the planning commission asked us to move the sign down closer to the intersection of Vine and, uh, Wisconsin. And so, uh, we had the plan redrawn up, uh, with the sign moved, it's drawn to scale, so you can kind of see what's, you know, the size of the sign associated with the area. The only part of the actual sign is that, that little skinny bar in the middle, the rest of it is plantings that go around the base of, the, the base of the sign and, and things along those lines. Um, as we looked through, uh, people have had questions about the impact of the sign, so we did run, we did have them come bring out a temporary sign, uh, at night, so people could see what it looked like at night from different points of view, uh, and we had some images here, uh, that were taken, so this image is obviously facing east, uh, on, uh, on Vine. Uh, as I go down, I'll show you a couple different images. This is directly across the street, uh, from, from the sign, this would be, um, you know, opposite of the sign, so, uh, the sidewalk on the south side of Vine Street, uh, where it was originally planned on being placed, actually you can see it just, would have been about five to 10 feet actually, uh, to the east there, but, you know, the hill was kind of slanted, so we didn't want to drive it up there. Uh, another picture, um, this would be, uh, across the street from, uh, basically Wisconsin, uh, looking at the sign. Um, again, the sign auto dims so that it doesn't, uh, so as it gets darker outside, the sign dims itself. Um, and as we work, as we work through that, uh, this, again, would be coming east on, east on Vine, uh, the sign kind of fits in with, you know, uh, we had a game going on the night that the sign was there, you can kind of see how it relates to compared to like, street, uh, streetlights and then also cars would be coming down Vine. Um, again, slightly across the street based on where the sign is. And then our last two images, these are just kind of images from parking lot, just to kind of see the scale of the sign. It's, it's, it's not overly large, although it might look like that on paper, but when you actually get out there and you start to set it out there, it's not a very big sign. Uh, we would follow the, uh, the council's recommendation for, um, operation, which I believe is, needs to be off by 10:30 at night and doesn't come back on until 6 o'clock in the morning, uh, the auto dimming feature, and then also, uh, no animation on the sign and that messages would be, uh, on the sign, uh, for a minimum of six seconds. And I think the industry standard, uh, is four to six seconds, uh, you know, we would go on the high end of that industry standard, so it would be a static, uh, uh, message before it, before it moved. Uh, the other thing with this sign is it, obviously it gives an opportunity for the school to get information out about what's going on in the district and, uh, different things that are going on at the high school, but also gives us an opportunity to potentially, um, uh, put out messages for the community events and different things that we have going on in the community. Vine is one of the most heavily traveled, obviously, streets, uh, in the city of Hudson, and so with it being on an arterial street like that, uh, makes a lot of sense to be able to, you know, put things out that the city may have going on, events and things along those lines on the sign to get messages out. So with that being said, what questions can I answer, uh, for you related to the, the signage?
Anybody? Anybody?
I just have one question. And thanks for all the information. I just wanted to confirm, so this is an information-based thing? This is not, we're not going to see logos for, for instance, outside of maybe school logos and things like that, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not designed to, it's not designed to run video or anything like that. It's, it's designed to be static, static messaging. And so it would not, it would not be anything flashing or animation or anything along those lines.
Got you. Thank you.
Nick, I have, I have a question. One of my concerns is safety with traffic in that area with, obviously, young drivers going in and out of the high school, et cetera. So the two questions related to that are, one, the changing of the sign, you know, from one message to another. I know you talked about industry standards, but I, I'm wondering if we could increase that and make it a more static situation so kids aren't, oh, changed again, you know? So what would like a 30-second or a one-minute change period do for, do for you guys, basically?
Well, it's, it's definitely not, not out of the question. It's just, that would be quite a dramatic time change compared to what typically the message centers run. You know, if we wanted to go to like eight or 10 seconds, you know, between, you know, I think would be good. But we also want to be able to make sure that, you know, people that happen to be walking by and things like that are able to see multiple messages, you know, as they, as they pass the high school so that they can see what's going on. But if there is a timeframe that the, the council would like us to change that message center, we can set it at whatever, you know, whatever the council.
That's something I figured out. You can, you can adjust it.
We can adjust it. We can adjust the, you know, how quickly it changes through messages. Yep.
And maybe it's, maybe it's even a question of, you know, in the morning when, when kids are coming, right? And then right after school when they're going? Maybe it's a question of those are when they're slowed down or something like that.
Okay.
I guess my concern is that, that I do think, I know the neighbors and I've talked to the High Point folks, and they've got concerns about that safety and traffic, and, and they've got to use those same roads type of thing. So I, I'm just looking at it as what's the least distracting to young drivers? And even the industry standard, I mean, that's quick. Eight seconds is quick to me. So if there's a way we could slow that down and come to some kind of a consensus on whether that's a portion of the day or whether that's throughout the day, I think that would be helpful for the, for the neighborhood there.
Yeah, we, we'd definitely be open to that conversation. Absolutely.
I got a, I got the same concerns from the Jacobson Woods neighbors as well and about the, the safety issues. The, the other question that I got from one of them was, what is the real purpose for this sign? Why do we need it? Why, why do we need to have this sign when we've got all these other methods of communication? So we've got a, you know, the school website, we've got, you know, email and text messaging and things like that. Why do we need this sign when we've got all these other?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we know is that 75% of the people that live in our community have no tie to the school district. They don't send their kids there. They don't work for us. They just, they merely pay the bill. And so they don't have a, there's not always a constant need for them to go to our website or for us to have their information, to push information out to them. But when we can advertise what's going on in the district and how they can utilize our facilities or different things that we have coming up, you know, it's, it's to let a broader audience know what's going on and how they could potentially get to use the facilities and things like that, whether it be our, our fitness center that's open to the community, whether it be plays or, or concerts or games and things like that coming up. Because, you know, not everybody is going to, you know, have that access. Not everybody's going to know to go there. And so, you know, it also gives us, gives us an opportunity to get messages out, like we've said. You know, not just school district messages, but, you know, we've had great partnerships with the city in the past to be able to put messaging out if there's different events going on in the city or potentially even in, in the townships that we serve and things like that, to be able to, to address that. And so it really is about widening the base of communication so that, you know, the majority of folks that don't interact or don't have kids in our district know what's going on so they can, they can come and, and see what's going on.
Nick, the, can you clarify what the cost to the school district taxpayers is?
Yep, absolutely. So there's a lot of misinformation out there right now. And, and there are people putting things, I think it's called Hudson Word of Mouth, and, and saying that there's, this is tax dollars. So this is 100% cost covered by the Ed Foundation. So there's, there's not tax dollars being spent on this sign. And so this is a donation from the Education Foundation of Hudson. I believe they emailed and let, you know, all of you in support of the sign. And so, you know, there's not, there's not tax dollars associated with this sign.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just to clarify, there, there'd be no, under the ordinance, there'd be no flashing lights, no scrolling? It's simply a static message that would change whatever?
Yeah, and like I said, I think you guys have taken care of most of that stuff in the ordinance rewrite that you guys already did, I think, you know, a year or two ago. Even talking about how often signs are supposed to change, when they can be on, when they need to be off. And, and so we would obviously follow all of those guidelines.
I did not find those in the ordinance.
It's, it's in there.
So, okay. Each message on the sign must be displayed for a minimum of four seconds. So is that, but we, we can put other things into the conditional use permit if we want to. And then I'm looking for, okay, so the, the dusk to dawn, time of day between sunrise and sunset is 500 nits or equivalent candleers per square meter. So it does not say to turn it off.
It's in a separate paragraph.
Yeah.
Oh, it is? Okay. Oh, in the public districts?
I'm pretty sure it, it's 10:30 to 6. Yeah, that it would be off.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Dusk to dawn. All sign and decorative lighting sources shall not exceed 350 from dusk to dawn, and all sign and decorative lighting sources shall be entirely turned off between the hours of 10:30 PM and 6 AM. Okay, unless there's a public emergency. Okay, that helps because the, the neighbors, I asked them, all right, what, what would be palatable? And they said turn it off between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. They, they were very concerned about the safety issues and the, and having the students be, you know, you've got, as Paul said, you've got the young drivers who are inexperienced, and they have all these distractions already with the cell phones and, and their friends, and you're in a crowded area. So they're going to be distracted by the sign as well. And that's, that's a problem. So I, I liked your suggestion of maybe having a, a static sign when the students are coming to school, when the students are being let out of school so that it's not changing and they aren't going to be distracted by the changing sign. But I'm in a position where no matter what I do, I'm, somebody's not going to be happy with me.
Say, Joyce, I'll tell you, the Plan Commission talked very much about safety, and that's why we suggested moving it down to that Wisconsin street, closer to that, so they're actually stopped. There's a four-way stop there. So we're stopping them instead of just driving along. Now, that's not the whole reason. And I want to remind or to clarify that it was seven to zero, and we had no public comment at the public hearing once we moved that, to that entrance.
And the people from Jacobson Woods said that they didn't like that move of the sign. So they weren't, weren't happy about that. I, you know, I look, I think about where you've got the, the sign, the plan for the sign currently, and you really can't read it from Wisconsin Street, which is that an advantage or is that a disadvantage? Because people who are coming from Wisconsin Street, they're going to be seeing the side of the sign rather than, I mean, the, you know, the profile of the sign rather than the, the sign itself. I'm going to make the motion to.
The only way to, with.
Just one, just one second, Jim.
I'm going to make the motion to reject the, the conditional use permit.
I'll second that.
Let me, let me just add, if I, I might, that on conditional use permits, if you're going to make a motion to deny the conditional use permit, that you have to deny with findings based on the, the ordinance itself. And, and so it's not, it's not sufficient merely to make a motion to, to deny, but you need to relate it back to the, the specifics of the ordinance, including compatibility with, with neighborhood and all the other requirements that are in there. So they're, that they're actually findings. Because ultimately, the Wisconsin law indicates you have to have substantial evidence to deny a conditional use permit. And so in your motion, if you would, if you would include those, those findings so that it's clear on, on what basis your denial is, is founded.
Well, and maybe, can I just ask a question? Because it's not so much where I think the bigger issue is, not in the sign, but in the precedence of we're allowing a sign in this spot, then how do we stop other businesses from wanting to have signs that are in, up and down that Vine Street as well?
Well, that's a, that's an easy one. You have an ordinance that permits signs, but only permits them conditionally based on the facts that are presented by each application. So it's not your, if you approve this sign, and that's your decision, the approval is based on the specific facts contained within this particular application. And your ordinance has a set of criteria by which the applicant has to meet in order to have their, their sign approved. So this is, conditional use permits are, are less about precedent. And in fact, Wisconsin law says that, you know, ultimately, in order to deny what's been brought forward, the, you have to prove effectively that there's substantial evidence that wouldn't allow that use to, to be permitted in that particular location. So it kind of goes the other way on, on these particular types of, of applications.
So do we have a basis for denying the permit?
That's up to you.
That's up to you, yeah. Absolutely. I mean, as, as you look at, at your ordinance and the, the performance requirements for signs in, in public districts, you have certain criteria, the public need for the proposed sign, whether the proposed, proposed sign is compatible with the purposes of this chapter, the impact of the proposed sign on the character and aesthetics of the neighborhood, as well as listing mitigate, mitigation options to help lessen any potential impacts. Such mitigation strategies shall be implemented. The use of the property as it relates to the need for the additional sign area in this case, as it's larger than the, the 30 square feet, the size of the lot or parcel in the proposed sign location, dusk to dawn luminescent standards, disability glare, whether the issuance of the conditional permit, conditional use permit is in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare and other considerations deemed necessary by, by the Plan Commission. The statute is, is favorable to those who apply for conditional use permits in that if they can either meet all of your requirements or if they agree to meet the conditions that, that you impose to reasonably mitigate any negatives, there's a strong precedence for requiring conditional use permits to be granted under the statute. There has to be substantial evidence going the other way that would allow a, a city council to deny a conditional use permit application. So your findings have to be strong. They have to be based in, in substantial evidence. They have to be based in fact as opposed to speculation or opinion.
Okay. So then I'm going to base it on the, the character and the aesthetics of the neighborhood and community. There's, there are concerns by the, the neighbors. There's also the concerns about safety and that it would be a distraction to the students in particular, but to any drivers in that area.
You're contradicting your Plan Commission, seven to zero. And they all went through this.
Mm-hmm. And I watched all of the, the meetings and, but, you know, I've got constituents who are very much against this.
Everybody's got constituents one way or the other.
Mm-hmm. Well, let's.
Joyce has amended her motion, so look to Sarah.
Right.
And you're in agreement with the?
Yes, can I, I, and I, I'm not sure if this is the time for me to ask this or not. So I have not taken my government 101 training yet. So tell me if I'm doing this wrong. Can you explain, or do we have any history on why we didn't approve it with YMCA? What was difference about the YMCA sign that they requested years ago?
That predates my time, so I don't know.
I, I think it predates mine, and if it didn't, there we go, challenging that memory of mine again.
Randy, you probably were.
I don't remember. Everything was on paper then.
I, I can also tell you, though, that the law changed about two years ago or three years ago with Act 67. It used to be that there were no standards for denial, municipal denial of conditional use permits, meaning that you could deny a conditional use permit for, for any reason. And the law flipped that on its, on its head because, you know, what the legislature said at the, at the time was, the city has taken the affirmative step of identifying particular uses that could be permitted condition, with conditions that would allow the impacts to, to be mitigated. And so the, the legislature just a few years ago said, well, you know, if you've already made the decision that you're going to allow these particular uses in these districts, you better have a really good reason for denying applications that come in for those conditional uses. So, you know, it could be that it was a different time, that there was a different, different standard, that there were different facts. But, you know, here we sit with this application, with the law in, in its current state.
And Joyce, one other thing, and Sarah, the school district has, including when they built the parking lot in the stadium, they have worked tremendously with Plan Commission and the city to address every issue that's come to them.
I understand.
With residents. And they've changed it. They've, they've worked with us. So as a good partner, I'm thinking they've done their due diligence to, to make a good plan. And that's why I support it, and that's why you got a seven-zero on a Plan Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering.
I just want to clar, clarify one thing. Sarah, you're okay with the amended motion?
I am.
So you're seconding the amended motion? Okay.
Well, I'm wondering if we, before we vote, if, if High Point, if Jim could have a chance to maybe address the council too?
Absolutely. If he wants to, I think that we can. Again, we're kind of going against the grain of, of the public comment. But I, you know, the people are here, and I think this is a volatile enough issue. But before we do that, Jim, you wanted to make a statement before I recognize Joyce for her motion. Do you want to make that now, or you want to wait? And Jim, Councilmember Weber I'm talking to now.
Yeah, I, I could go ahead. And I think the, the school board and the Plan Commission have done a great job of identifying issues and doing things to resolve those. The flexibility that they've shown. The suggestion tonight to slow the messaging down while the students are coming into school, that's not, not a bad idea. A minute's really crazy. But of course, you're, you'll never see more than one message. So it's, it's just really defeats the reason for having that type of a sign. And I think the school attendees are way more attuned to what's going on than we are. And the value to the community of knowing what in, is to the school rates highly for me. I won't, I won't be driving down Vine Street when the, when schools is, when students are coming, arriving and leaving. I know when that is, and, and I know not to go that, down that road. So, but I do it many other times, and I would appreciate those kinds of heads up since we really have no other source of information. If you're not part of the school district, or if you ever try to go on the website and find out something, it's not easy. But unless you know. So I, I think this is a really good addition. I realize there's an impact on the neighborhood, and I, I went over there when the trial sign was up and, and watched it for a while and looked at it and drove around. And, and to see, yeah, it's, it's different, but it's not obnoxious. It's, it's so low. It's not like it's 20 feet off the ground flashing like a lot of commercial signs are. So it's, it's, I think, very well done.
Jim, do you have a, this is Paul. Do you have a suggestion on if we slowed it during the coming and going? Like what, how many seconds you would want to see that?
I, I, I would guess 10 or 15 seconds, but that's, I'm not an expert in the field. But just think about, I think about when I drive by RJ's, waiting for their sign to change. And I've only got 50 feet to see that. And you catch one or two things. So that's, that's just kind of the base that I'm using. So slowing it down to 30 seconds, you'll, you'll never see anything. I also think the people making, turning off of Wisconsin, you don't want them looking at that sign. They, they should be involved. They should be involved in turning. So, being, pointing, the blank end pointing at them is a good thing to people on Vine Street that have the value of using, of seeing that sign.
So...
But, no, I don't have a good number for that. I would have to rely on the industry experts and on studies, if there are traffic studies that have been done. I'm sure that information exists.
Thanks, Jim.
For clarification, Nick, and/or Mike, for a conditional use permit for what we're doing right now. We... If the times don't work, let's say the time of usage doesn't work, or the time that a sign is up, we feel isn't working, we can come back and review that, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, if there are safety concerns, if there are complaints, if there are other issues with the use as it's approved, it can always be reviewed. The school district can be asked to come back in and have a conversation. The conditions can be amended if there's factual information, data to support that the fact that it's creating issues with traffic flow or safety issues. So, that's the beauty of conditional use permits, is that, you know, it's subject to review and factual findings by the city council, and can always be amended if needed.
So, one thing I didn't hear tonight, Mr. Superintendent, public service announcements.
Absolutely. So, you know, we could put public service announcements on that sign. Like I said, working with the city on that, not only events going on in the city, but other events, or other things going on. I think about just this COVID-19 thing that we just got through, or were trying to get through, I guess, when I totally threw it. You know, some of the information that would have been able to be put out there, whether it be food distributions and things along those lines, that maybe not everybody has access to the internet to get to a website to be able to see what's going on. I know, sitting on that, you know, attending some of that Hudson Crisis meeting on Tuesdays, that's one of the challenges, is getting the message out to people that don't always have access. And so, public service announcements absolutely could be a part of the... Part of using the sign.
Dedicated percentage of time for that, or...
No, I think what we do is just work with the city. If the city had something we needed to get on there and felt strongly about it, then figure out a way to get it on there.
What's the technology for things like Amber Alerts and...
It's the same thing. We could put Amber Alerts on there, we could put, you know...
Would that be like automatic, like I get on my phone?
I don't know if it's automatic or not. You know, I'd have to check and see with the sign company, but, you know, it's all controlled, obviously, via computers, you know, back in the high school office. And so, you know, that's one thing we'd have to find out. Can we put an Amber Alert on it if, like, let's say it comes at 8:00 at night, when we don't have anybody in the high school office? We might be able to do that remotely, because the sign itself actually communicates back to the building via cellular signal. It's not wired back to the building, it just gets power. So, it can be connected, you know, even if we have somebody at home that's responsible for it. If we need to get something changed at night, we can get that changed. Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to make a couple of points. I think in terms of the setup of this, I think we kind of forget, eventually, this kind of fades into the background, right? There's a lot of video signs out there. I mean, heck, there's even phones that people get distracted with. So, when we talk about safety in kids, I'm actually far more concerned about kids looking at their phone, which is... I mean, I get your point, what you're saying, Paul, about the message being flipping, but to think that kids these days are going to be looking at that sign and looking every four seconds at the sign. I'm more concerned about phones. I think, you know, when it comes to sort of the advertising world, and visually, there's a lot of noise out there, this, in my opinion, is good noise. This is about the community. This is about... I didn't even know that the exercise room was... Facility was open to the public until the night, right?
All right. Jim? Anything? Ludiger? Yep.
My name's Jim Ludiger. I live at 624 Hickory, here in Hudson, and good to be here without a mask on this evening. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So, you know, I understand that this is a balancing of interests. You've got competing interests, and the school district makes a good point that there's a benefit to this in some cases. But, there are a lot of people in Hudson that don't want this sign, that are concerned about safety, and they're concerned about the commercialization of our neighborhoods. I had a realtor in Hudson, in the business for 30 years, tell me that my property would lose approximately $50,000 in market value as a result of this sign coupled with the other lighting at the high school. You know, it's just, in my opinion, I represent the residents of High Point, I'm on the board, and, you know, I can't tell you how many times a week I get input from somebody about the safety issue and about the lighting at the high school. This just exasperates the problem. We didn't attend the Planning Commission meeting, the second one. There were a lot of people that were interested. It just got biased, quite frankly. I didn't see the announcement. The other people didn't see the announcement. I guarantee that they would have been there and objected en masse. I don't want to tell you that it's just High Point people either. I know that there are people in the council, some of you who have received complaints and concerns about this from non-High Point people. You know, there are a lot of people in Hudson that don't want this sign there. There's also the issue about precedent. So, what about the three churches within a half a mile and the YMCA, which, by the way, the Y is going to request a CUP? And they're going to come back and they're going to say... That's a fact, by the way, I know that. And they're going to come back and say, "Well, you granted this to the school, how come you're not giving us permission?" So, I would encourage you to think through this issue thoroughly. If you don't vote tonight, give us some time and think about the ramifications. So, thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Jim? No? Yes, sir, come on up. We've got two people raising their hand back there, so...
I'm David Creer from 626 Hickory Road. When this sign was proposed on that sidewalk, as I've mentioned once before, it's directly in front of our living room, we look directly across to the school. I do appreciate the consideration of moving that sign. Actually, I don't remember the temporary that was there. It was so temporary, that's why I don't remember. But anyhow, moving it and consideration of all the traffic at the corner is certainly a consideration. But because our driveway comes out about the same place that the students go in to the school, in the morning, there's just an enormous amount of traffic, and in the evenings, an enormous amount of traffic, right in that spot. Doesn't last long, but it moves through. So, in the consideration of, that you've given to move the sign, I appreciate. Not that I like it, but I appreciate it. But as far as the school goes, if they would turn off those lights on the front of the school, they are like spotlights. The parking lot lights are tolerable, but the spotlights on that school are intolerable. So, you know, and I'm not anti-school. I kind of enjoy the young guys coming to school in the morning. It reminds me of youth. But, my only complaint is, in the school, it's nice, it's a good place. I like the pool, I like the frogs. But, let's consider, you know, the lights and that safety of that sign. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name's Mike Hipcher. I live at 625 Hickory Road. I also used to live in Jacobson's Woods, and I have spoken to three or four... Everybody along Vine Street is definitely opposed to the sign. And, you know, listening earlier in the meeting, Randy, something that you said kind of struck a nerve. And when you were talking about the diversity comment, that people have the opportunity to come to this meeting, make comments, and you figure out a way to make those... Respond to those comments. I've came to a couple of these meetings, came to the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know if I've heard anybody come up here and say, "I really want that sign," besides the planning committee, some of the city council people, and the high school. Has there been anybody else that just came up here and said, "I want this sign"? No. Have numerous people came forward and said, "We don't want this sign"? The answer's yes. One last point. The other day, you were putting public service announcements of some announcements up on the scoreboard. Scoreboard is a great place to put up announcements, messaging. If it's so important to get that message out there in front of the high school, have you considered us using the scoreboard for doing that? It's a large sign, maybe you don't see it in both directions, but you'll be able to see it from Wisconsin, be able to see it from coming up Vine Street. You can do the same messaging on that scoreboard. So, I'd like you to consider that as an option, too. Okay? Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Sure. Can I speak? Yes, please.
Bob Bowman, 1600 Chestnut Drive. I live right behind the high school, the less attractive side of the high school, and not just because I live across the street from Joyce. But, you know, when... We make compromises. We... The community voted to have that high school there and keep it there. The high school was there before any of the neighborhoods were there, before I bought my house right behind it. You take the good with the bad. I love the marching band marching down my street. I love them practicing on the football field or behind. But I also get the larger heating and cooling system for the remodeled building. I know when the air conditioner is running. I hear the garbage trucks emptying those dumpsters at all times. Not too obnoxious. But get the smell of those dumpsters every once in a while in the summer. It is what it is. We have to live with it. It's our high school. It's in our community. I appreciate Randy had said I was concerned about moving the sign closer to the intersection, but what he said about the stoplights and, or stop signs, and actually, it's a controlled intersection. It's also where there are lights right on that corner, so it even makes the sign less obtrusive, I believe. I walk that street in front of the high school just about every night. And when they had the temporary sign there, it was less bothersome than the streetlights. So, I mean, I live in the neighborhood, and I'm one of those people that do want to have it. I think every school, especially schools our size, whether they're residential or in rural, have a sign very similar. As far as the YMCA sign, you can ask Chris. He runs the YMCA in White Bear Lake, which is right across the street from housing neighborhood even more dense than ours. Do they have a sign there? I don't know. The decision is conditional use. It's up to you guys. We're not talking about a gas station selling hot dogs with their neon sign. We're talking about a high school. And, you know, arguments could be, you know, why didn't we do this four years ago when we remodeled the high school, or three years? But we need a sign. I don't think the sign is as obnoxious as some think, and I also feel that a lot of negativity because of social media is based on information, and that means that people are... I'm reading it. They're saying over and over, "It's a waste of tax money." And now they're even criticizing the Ed Foundation by saying, "That's not how they should be spending their money." I mean, these are good people. These are community people who donate their time and money. And now we're putting them in a spot. I just think it's time to move forward with this. And, yeah, cut it off at certain times, make it dim, have more, you know, check it in six months, and, yeah, but it's time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Comments?
I agree.
We've got a motion from...
Yeah, I've got a motion, yeah.
All right, so the motion is to deny? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Move to adopt the district's EMD sign, CUP.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second to approve. Discussion?
My only thought is the friendly amendment, Randy, if you'd consider, like, a 15-second flip time for just that morning and right after school. I don't know what it'd be, 45 minutes or something? We'd have to ask the school district, but...
Friendly amendment, but I think they could work with staff to figure that out.
Is that... You understand what we're saying, Nick?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think if I... As long as it has that on top, I'm good with it. And I think, I do want to say this, I want to say that, I want to congratulate the folks at High Point and Jim, because I think they've been on... They've been informing me for a year on this issue. And I appreciate the organizing, and I appreciate the honesty, and I know it's not easy. And as your representative, I have listened, and I have tried to listen to all sides. And for me, what it just kind of comes down to is, I really think it's a good community asset, and I really think the benefits to the total community, kind of the common good, in the long run are going to outweigh the drawbacks of the neighborhood. And I understand that nobody likes change in their neighborhood. I get that. It's a hard thing. But I think the safety piece that we're suggesting with the times is going to help. And I also think turning it off at the 10:30 is really, really important, too, because that's something I wanted to see, too. So, with those, I think, moving forward in the long run, I think it's good for Hudson, I think it's good for the school district, I think it's good for the community.
Anybody else? Are you...
Paul, sorry. I was... Paul, I wanted to ask Paul a question. Do you think 10:30 is the right time to turn it off, or should it be earlier? I mean, the residents are asking for 9:00, and is that reasonable, or is that...
I mean, my initial thought was 10:00, and then the ordinance does say 10:30, I guess. I guess that would be up to... Randy's got the motion in terms of if there's a... If you have a feeling either way.
I'd rather leave it, but if it becomes an issue, again, we can take the conditional use permit issue back up.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is something we can revisit in the future, too, if there are all of a sudden safety issues, and I think we revisit it, so, okay.
I'd like it to be revisited after six months, just to see how things are working and get feedback from people.
Do you mean six months of installation of the sign?
After installation, yes.
I could add, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Who made the second?
I did. What are you changing?
To review in six months?
I agree, second.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion's approved. Becky, did you get that?
Two nays, correct?
Yes.
Thanks, got it.
Discussion possible action on open records, request fees.
Hi, are you looking at me?
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, Halsar Brook did make this request.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you... Aaron, did you say you were going to say something first?
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that you had made the request for this item, so I was going to want you to take it.
All right. I brought this request forward because I've heard citizens asking and looking for clarity on this, and some of the issues that have been raised is that on the website, there is a PDF that can be printed out, and wondering, first of all, if that's something that could be an online form with payment as well, because of the hours that they have... With work conflicts, sometimes it's hard for them to get in here during the standard Monday-through-Friday hours. And right now, it's even more limited, since we're not open on... The city hall isn't open on Fridays. So, I'm wondering if, one, putting an option to do it online and pay online, and then, two, if there could be a little bit more of a formal policy. I want to make sure it's not cost prohibitive for people, and so that it's clear, and so if all of a sudden it's maybe going to exceed a certain benchmark that we put, whether it's $50 or whatever, that they have to be notified and give approval, you know? Open to suggestions, but just bringing forward concerns that I've heard from folks in the district I serve.
And I'm here... And I'm hearing the similar concerns about, we as a city need to be accessible to everyone, including people who are, have limited incomes. And I do have concerns about charging. I know that we, it's a tough balance, because we want to balance, you know, small requests. We don't want to make them, have them expensive. But we also don't want people who to continually ask for requests because they're fishing for information, trying to have, trying to do their own agenda. So, how do we balance that?
Yeah. And, you know, as I read the statement that Aaron, you did on the background, I noticed that you had mentioned that it was you and our city attorney who reviewed documents. I'm wondering, you know, you guys are incredible experts, and I'm assuming there's an expert price tag with that. Is there anybody else that could take a look at that? Or is there a way, it could be just one of you as a way to save money?
So, I'll try to answer the questions in order. The forms available, fillable on the website is something that we can do. We can't accept electronic payments right now, but we did just switch our bank provider, and we also did just update our financial software. So once both of those are sort of established and up and running, we are going to start accepting credit card payments, you know, at city hall and online and things like that. So that will be coming. So we will be able to get to the, you know, pay online sort of thing soon. I think that the next question was about, well, I'll jump to yours, Eric, because I remember that one for sure at least, who reviews and things like that. But generally speaking, the nature of what's being requested is data that is generally either personnel-related or things where there's not, being a small, a city with very small staff, there's really not other staff that are able to review those documents appropriately. I serve as the human resources director as well as city administrator. It's in the title, even though I don't put it in the title. So I am the one who needs to, you know, deal with the personnel-related requests and things like that. So when I review, my goal is to only have the city attorney sign off on what I'm saying. So I'm trying to knock that list down significantly before it goes to the city attorney. So I'm not just saying, "Okay, city attorney, here's six hundred documents that met the general, outlined of the request. Which ones of these are relevant and which ones of these are public or non-public?" I try to narrow that down significantly, so the city attorney is only doing a, basically a quick review to verify my results. So we are trying to keep the cost as low as possible in how we do this already. And we do only charge requests that will cost fifty dollars or more. So, you know, we aren't saying, "Oh yeah, this is going to take us, you know, three minutes and it's too..." No. I mean, quick things. We just send the responses immediately. And we also try to work with our requesters. So we've had some requests over the past year where I have a fairly good idea of what they're looking for when they make the request. And when the results come in, I tell them, "I'm willing to release these requests to you. It will cost you fifty dollars or whatever the fee is, but I am telling you now that you're not going to find what you're looking for. You don't have to trust me. I'm more than happy to release these to you if you pay, but I am trying to tell you that, you know, I got the idea of what you're trying to find and there's nothing there." So we actually try to do what we can to work with the requesters on these. So, you know, we, I think we try to be as fair and equitable as possible, but, you know, we are following state statute as far as, you know, what work we can charge for and what amounts we can charge for. And, you know, unless the council directs us otherwise, you know, we're going to continue to do it that way.
And let me, let me just add a couple of things, because I think it's important to understand kind of the framework of the open records law in Wisconsin. First of all, there is an intention that government be transparent, right? So that you can get the documents that you want as the requester. The problem with that, or the challenge is that if a request is so broad, then it goes to Aaron, and then Aaron has to spend a bunch of time looking for every possible document that could potentially meet that request. So the best requests are those that are specific. If you're looking for a particular time period, if you're looking for records on a particular subject, the more specific a requester can be, the better. That's going to make everybody's life easier. And the second point is, the law doesn't really allow us to ask people what they're looking for. So, you know, Aaron does a good job at kind of filtering through, because he has a sense as to what's being sought out just by virtue of the request itself. But we can't ask for the reason behind the request. And so, you know, our job is to respond to what's being presented. So there is a responsibility that gets placed on the requester. And if they make a broad request, then it becomes more challenging, because we have to respond to the broad request. And the third thing that I would say is that there's a process for dealing with open records request. You know, the first piece of it is to figure out, are there documents that are responsive? And then to figure out, is the information in the documents that are responsive legally available for disclosure? Is there a statute that prevents disclosure? Is there personal information that has to be redacted? You see in Aaron's memo that we can't charge for redaction costs. So the last year, the city with Kathy as a city attorney incurred eighteen thousand dollars in redaction costs, because there were documents that were requested that had personal private information that can't legally be transmitted. So while the intention is to be as transparent as possible, there's process behind that sort of overarching philosophy that we still have to go through, and we still have to make sure that we can only disclose what the law allows us to disclose. And if we get broad requests, then ultimately we have to try to respond and do the best that we can. So the more requesters can do to be specific and really kind of narrow their inquiry as to what they're looking for, the more efficient and the easier it will be to get to those particular documents.
Well, I'm wondering if there were a policy kind of stating that, so that there was some good directions for the people when they were requesting it? Maybe that's something that could be online with it too? Because when I looked on the website, I thought it was just that PDF that kind of asked some of those questions. But I could see how that maybe it wasn't clear to them.
Sure.
Is that something we could do to make it more clear?
Yeah, I, you know, we could probably put together a frequently asked questions sort of document pretty darn easily, a one-pager that, you know, tells people, you know, here's, here's the way you should make your requests, or here are some best practices for making your request that will help you get the documents more efficiently and more effectively and more cost-effectively for that matter. I think that'd be, in fact, I know we've probably got those documents in that direction in our file already.
And then the online form, it sounds like that is something that is doable. The payment is not quite yet. If somebody wasn't able to make a payment during office hours, is that something they could put in the utility box?
Yep, we've had that happen multiple times.
Okay.
Good.
I think that gives me the clarity that I need. And so is the next step that you guys will, could you just enlighten me? What you'll do next?
Yeah, if that's the desire of the council, to provide FAQs on submitting document requests, we're happy to, happy to put those together for your review and memo form.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, it sounds like a good plan. Do you need a motion for?
No.
No.
All right. Everybody good? Discussion on responding to citizen comments.
Yep. So I think this was also council member Brock, if I'm not mistaken? Yep. So I would allow her to ask the, or start the conversation.
Well, and I think the issue sheet that you created, or the background sheet, I don't know if I'm using the correct terminology or not. It shed light to me what I need to do. So if my understanding is correct, when a citizen makes a public comment, if it's something that I think warrants the need for further discussion, that's something that I can add to future agendas, and that is the same for my fellow council members as well. And I think that's nice for there to be clarity for our citizens too, that they can help hold us accountable as well. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Discussion possible action on returning to in-person council meetings.
Just want to have people come back into the meetings. I think it's great to see people as unprecedented that the actions by the CDC kind of opened it up a little easier for us. But I would request that we start with our June first meeting being here. And I don't know if you want to make exceptions or how you want to go about it, but.
Well, and I should comment too, that in my memo, I had put when staff would be returning, but that was pre-CDC updating their guidelines. And so as you can see, staff are now returning, starting this meeting, and they will be continuing to do so moving forward.
I like the option of being able to attend meetings by Zoom for those times when each of us needs to be out of town or something like that. I think that that was really one of, a good benefit that we had, was being able to attend remotely. I don't think that it should be something that should be misused, and because it is helpful to be in person at the meetings, but I think that having that option is a good one.
Yeah, I could see that. I mean, exceptions to the rule, but it would have to be really strict. Otherwise, we're just willy-nilly. I know the county's gone back to full meetings. I don't know if there's a Zoom way to do it. Doesn't sound like it from the committee I'm on.
Okay.
But you have to be in person. So I think naturally government is starting to get back to a normal run at it.
Interesting observation is, I think many, many businesses are realizing that they do not have to meet in person. That Zoom in some, many instances is very effective use of time and communication. Other times, you do need some face-to-face. So I don't think we need to say, "We got to go back to the way we were." That's, we need to think about that more carefully. Just because it was more, that was the way we did it, doesn't mean that's the way we should do it.
Building the relationships face-to-face in government is a huge asset. I think it's more important for us to be able to conversate, see your expressions, say thank you, well, good or bad.
I was smiling.
I know. I'm talking about me, because I've always got a grumpy look, so.
Especially on camera.
I just, I think it's really important to build relationships and see people face-to-face in our constituency, the staff we work with. I think that's really important. Other exceptions to be off on a Zoom call, sure. And maybe we get an okay from Aaron to allow that exception when that need arises, but it should not be the norm.
Well, what about having citizen comments via Zoom? That makes things easier for our constituents to be able to.
That's a whole different subject.
Make comments.
Because again, we're here facing our constituents. They should be here if they have questions or concerns, asking us as well.
Not necessarily. Some of them do have difficulties getting here.
Hiding behind camera, using different names.
Well, I don't like that.
There are issues.
Yes, I agree.
And we know they do that. And here's, here's my take on this. I don't, I don't want to force members back here until they're all comfortable being back here. But once that happens, you know, one of the things we haven't talked about is that there's an additional cost to doing Zoom meetings, just personnel costs and having our IT people here that normally wouldn't be here. We're usually just with one guy in the sound room and that's it. And we've had to have Brian in here and Kim sometimes. Sometimes we have three people in here trying to get everything working. So, you know, is it an advantage if we have an exception? Absolutely. But at the same time, I mean, we have, we've operated in the past when people have gone on vacation without a problem. Our council members, that is, staff members. So I think, I want us personally, I would like to see this back to live, in-person meetings, only with certain exceptions. But in the meantime, I don't want to force our council members to come in here until they're absolutely comfortable being in this room.
I'm not looking for a date. I just throw that out there. I mean, if, whatever, people are comfortable. I'm fully vaccinated there, it's public, so I have no issues with that. You know? I really believe in building the relationship as a working partners, council members.
So are you thinking council meetings and then the committee meetings as well then?
Yeah.
And I do have to say, I know that the mayor brought this up, and I think Randy too, but we do have the option as well, that as you talk to returning to in-person meetings or not, and do we allow for Zoom or not? We can, we can have the Zoom available only for council members. You know, we don't have to allow the, you know, I'm not saying this is the right way to go, but we don't have to continue to allow Zoom to be a wide-open sort of participation. It can be that we have the Zoom option available for council members that don't feel comfortable yet coming in, but that for, you know, that it's not open for the public to participate or to watch via Zoom. It would have to be only through the River Channel or in person. We can, we can split and divide that. And again, and especially Jim with your comment on that, I'm not saying that's the right way to go, but I do want the council to recognize that, you know, you can move forward however you want to. There are options. You can require all in-person. You can allow only, say, council members to Zoom in when they're not available to come in. Or you can keep it open, as we have been doing it, to both council members and citizens for participation.
My observation is that the Zoom has allowed more people to just watch the meetings. They may not, they may not choose to participate, but they're seeing us, hearing us live, and hearing what we really say. I think probably more effective than the YouTube. That's just a guess, because people are, I have, I've had a number of people state that they actually follow this. I asked, "Really"? I'm impressed.
I believe so.
So that's another aspect to it, is our outreach. Not just being able to receive comments, but for us to be seen on a broader basis. So maybe it's not, maybe there's different media format that works. Or maybe we need to work more with our facilities that we do have and make that more broadly used.
Typically, Jim, we are live on River Channel.
Right.
You know, Jim, I agree that the Zoom has allowed a lot of people who maybe are balancing young kids, whatever, to be present and be able to make a public comment, where it might be really hard for them to come in here. And I do think since the mayor has put some stricter parameters around tones and making sure that they're residents, I don't think there's been the abuses that there had been. So I do see a real merit that it really does increase citizen engagement and makes it very doable for families.
I agree with that. Just with my experience with teaching, we're talking about how we're going to be balancing in-person tutoring versus online tutoring. And I've been doing online tutoring for the last year. And it's been great for students who have children, because they, they can keep the kids busy for a little bit. We've got about an hour where we can work on something. And the, and the student doesn't have to get a babysitter, doesn't have to leave the house and drive to campus, and it's the same thing here. I, we want to make sure that people can participate as much as possible. We want to make it easy for them to participate.
I don't want to talk it to death, but, I mean, back in the day, when we had the kids come in here, they were participating in government. That was the essential educational piece about having this open for residents to come in. Kids would come in with mom and dad, they'd speak at the podium, we'd chuckle. Mayors would give pins or candy out. I mean, it was, it was an outreach. And you're losing that with Zoom. So I just.
Well, we can, we can kind of continue this. I mean, it's not up for action right now, just discussion. I think everybody's kind of expressed their viewpoint, so.
What I was gonna say is just. What I was gonna say is I appreciate Randy's point, and that's why I'm, I'm here tonight. But I also appreciate the point of you got to wait till people are comfortable. And, you know, we're, we're coming out of a once every hundred-year pandemic, hopefully, once every hundred years. And so it's just going to take time for society to kind of adjust and feel its way out. So I don't want to put hard dates or it has to be this way by, by then. I think we just need all, we all need time to figure out what we're comfortable with, and we all need some weeks, if not months, to kind of work this thing out, so.
We don't know whether we're going to have another jump in cases.
Right.
And so we need to be flexible to deal with those things.
I'm, I'm more referring to the vaccination thing. As, as people's vaccination rates get up there, I think we're going to see that.
Yeah.
Kind of return to normalcy. My, I guess my point is it's not flipping a switch, even though kind of what the CDC said last week, I think, did that in some respects, but it's more of a gradual.
Yeah.
You know, businesses are just, schools, government, everything's going to just need some time to adjust.
Well, I wouldn't be here if I weren't fully vaccinated, so.
All right. Everybody good? Discussion possible action on Second Street retaining wall replacements and related updates to the city's retaining wall policy.
All right, this is me again. So this item is kind of following up from discussion from the April 12th city council meeting. Since that meeting, we as staff discussed changes to the retaining wall policy based on the feedback that we received and the cost estimates that these retaining walls would incur to, to replace or remove or whatever. And so staff has been working on some changes to the policy to lessen or in some cases eliminate the cost being assessed to adjacent property owners due to the high cost. I won't go through the entire changes of the policy, but some of the high points of, or should say high level summary of changes to the policy would be that for retaining walls that are able to be removed and the ground behind regraded with a maintainable slope, and that maintainable is defined in the, in the policy changes. The city would pay 100% of the cost for such work wherever that's possible. If the adjacent owner wants the wall replaced anyway, then the adjacent owner would pay for the kind of upcharge for that, that work. For retaining walls that are unable to be completely removed and the ground behind regraded with a maintainable slope, the city would pay 100% of the cost for the replacement of the wall to the minimum height required to achieve a maintainable slope using the materials that we would approve that would be a balance of the lowest construction costs and also materials that will handle structural load would be aesthetically pleasing and provide long-term longevity. If the adjacent owner wants the, a higher wall, a different type of wall that we already, that we do accept, you know, that kind of thing, then the upcharge would be for that adjacent property owner to pay for such work. Excuse me, after we would replace a retaining wall along city right-of-way or city property, the city will require an easement with the adjacent property owner so that the city can own and maintain the wall adequately into the future. And if the property owner will not agree to grant to be easement, the city would not pay for a replacement of the wall. So actually, I will talk more about how that changes the Second Street project with the next agenda item, but just wanted to run those, those changes by you all. You also, this isn't in the packet, but you should have received today an email from me with kind of a summary of what that, what that looks like, you know, in the, in the real world for how much responsibility the city is, would be taking on with these policy changes, you know, for better or for worse. I mean, it's up to the council to decide if they want to move forward with these changes or not, but just wanted to give you all sides of the story, so to speak. The city would be taking on ownership of approximately 300 retaining walls along city right-of-way within the city with the proposed changes tonight. We currently have about 40 to 50 that we currently would maintain or be on the hook for right now, so that would add 300 to that number. Of those 300, about 5 to 10% of the walls are in poor enough condition to warrant replacement as soon as possible. The standards for that are laid out in the retaining wall policy. The additional 15 to 20% are in a condition that would warrant replacement with an adjacent street reconstruction project. Again, those standards are in the retaining wall policy as well. So kind of to quantify the amount of cost or I guess, infrastructure that we would be taking on, and I'm not saying that this is the amount of money we would have to spend now to replace retaining walls or anything like that, but if we were to replace all 300 retaining walls, what would that cost? Just to give us some idea of the liability that we're taking on would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 to $12 million. Again, like I said, not all the walls are in poor enough condition that we would replace them right now, but just wanted to give you an idea of what, kind of to quantify what the amount of, of infrastructure we would be taking on with those changes. So with that, I will open up for any questions, and I'll also, Aaron can chime in too if I didn't explain something adequately with all this, because he was instrumental in kind of getting some of these, these policy changes.
Yeah. No, Dean did a good job summarizing, and basically I just want to go back to the fact that the reason that we're looking at this is because we've had our first project in, I would say, a while that had, that has retaining walls that will be required to be replaced as part of the project, and that's the Highway 35, Second Street project. And if you remember, when we first looked at this, the cost to retain, replace those retaining walls along Second Street as part of the project could have been up to $84,000 for one wall. The others ranged, you know, lower than that, but you were still talking about a range of, you know, $12,000, $15,000, $30,000, you know, up to $84,000. And that's a significant expense for a property owner to take on. So there were some council members that definitely expressed concerns about requiring a property owner to replace a wall as part of a project that is, you know, it's a, it's not a project that they're doing. It's a, in this case, it's a state project, but the, the walls are protecting city sidewalks and also the highway as well. But, you know, this is why we, we looked at making this change. Now, we're not saying this is the only answer. We recognize that this is a, a new responsibility that the city is taking on. Now, there are benefits to taking on this responsibility. That means that, you know, right now, if you just go look at the walls on Second Street, you have walls of all different types, all different construction, all different quality that, because they're all put in by private parties. And that's the case basically all through the city. And while there is expense involved with this, the benefit is that we will then, moving forward, not only have the, the ability to make sure that we're prop, we're putting in the right retaining walls and retaining walls that will have the, you know, the longest duration and things like that, but also that they're done in a uniform manner and that we're able to then monitor and update and, you know, ma- maintain them and things like that. Some of these retaining walls, you know, just as an example, again, on the 35 project, I'm sure when they're put in, you know, they're, they're excellent retaining walls, but each one of them has a different level of maintenance to them that is completely outside the city's control because they're private. And so, you know, the, the council's going to have to weigh with us that yes, we are definitely taking the burden off of individual property owners here, and we're taking it over as a city as a whole. But we're looking at it as a way to make sure that, you know, just because of the topography of Hudson, we have a lot of retaining walls. We just do, not all of them fall into this. When Dean talks about the, the 300 or whatever that we take in, there's many more that, that don't meet the requirements for this because they're not basically in place to, to help protect city right-of-way, which would be a sidewalk or a road. You know, they may just be protecting private property, things like that. Those are ones that we're not taking responsibility for. But we are taking, you know, potentially over the course of, I don't know what it would be, Dean, the next 10 years, 15 years, we'll end up with 300 retaining walls that we're, we will have replaced and will be maintaining and replacing again eventually. And so, you know, we want the council to be fully aware of what that means.
So, Aaron.
We recognize that, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, but I mean, you, you're saying that we have to. That's not necessarily true, is it?
Under this policy, we would.
Well, that, and so, Dean, you're just full of good news tonight.
Very rich.
It wasn't me beating them up this time.
I want to, I want to make sure, I want to separate this. I want to take care of the folks on Second Street right now. That's the issue before us. I don't want to deal with any type of policy that's going to bind us into the future with respect to anything other than what we're talking about on Second Street. And I can see, you know, with all of these retaining walls, we, we need to take a look at this. We can't just do a blanket policy on this because we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now but for the fact that Highway 35 is being done by the state, and those retaining walls are in jeopardy of falling, crumbling because of the work that's being done on Highway 35. When we talk about these other 300 retaining walls in the city, it's all, those, that's a whole different situation. And if we're doing the work, so, so as you said, Aaron, this is work that's being done by the city, or not by the city, by the state. It's not the property's owner, owner's fault. It's not the city's fault that this is being done. It needs to be done, but the other 300 walls, we, I, I, there is no way that I would entertain a blanket policy on those tonight.
I agree 100% Mayor.
So I, I want to.
Staff is fine with that. We don't have a problem with that. We just wanted to say, if we're going to do that for this project, we want to show you a policy that says, here's why, and here's what it would look like for all of them. But I don't, we don't have a problem if, if you say, listen, we want to take, we want to have more time to review this policy. We want to think about really what it implies, but we still want to address the Second Street. There's no problem with addressing the Second Street. It's, it's the very next agenda item. We can address that as a one-off because as you said, Mayor, this is based on one project that's bringing this forward right now that needs to get dealt with. And then we can deal with the rest later in looking at how we want to, you know, address a policy like this. Because there's options for any policy. We know that. I mean, we're not obligated to anything here. And we can look at a policy that, you know, says we'll look at retaining walls that need replacement if the city causes it based on a city project or something to that effect. That definitely narrows it down. Or, or maybe we say moving forward that, you know, we'll, we'll just take a look at them on a case-by-case basis. That's just fine as well. So, you know, there's no problem with tabling the policy for now and still moving on to the next agenda item and addressing it.
I'll move to table the wall policy.
Second. Motion second to table. It's not debatable. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed. Motion's approved. It's tabled. Discussion impossible action on Second Street retaining walls and letter of engagement is with Bolton and Mink for Design Services for the retaining wall removal replacements. And this is, I presume, just for Second Street.
Yes, exactly right, Mayor. So there's some information in this agenda item that kind of assumes that the policy changes that we just tabled were made, so I will have to kind of ignore that. But so with the Second Street project, obviously, we've discussed the retaining walls that need to be addressed with the project, and this item essentially moves forward the design for addressing these retaining walls that need to be addressed along there. So we would be looking to approve this letter of engagement with Bolton and Mink for the design services for those wall removal and replacements. The, the letter of engagement, you can see in there is approximately $23,640. And regardless of, of what we end up doing with the retaining wall policy, I mean, this is work that has to be done, in my opinion, anyway, and other staff can chime in too. But we want to keep moving on this because those walls would need to get addressed regardless of, of what the policy looks like.
So moved.
And, and like I said too before, just because we have, we don't have a policy, doesn't mean we can't do this. And what I would say though, for this motion, is to not only improve the letter of engagement with Bolton and Mink, but to also approve the projects as, the, the projects as listed here, which would be the replacement of some retaining walls and also the removal of some and regrading using the money that's available from the, from the budget of the project that we had, that we had left over based on the bid amounts. Because I, because we, since we didn't approve the policy as a whole, I want to make sure that you do approve this work that's identified in the memo as well as the letter of engagement so we can take care of them both as once, as a one-off for now until we can develop, you know, a policy later.
All right. We've got a motion.
I'll move, I need to amend it though to approve the projects that are listed as by staff.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Any discussion?
Can I just ask some questions on easement then? So everything that went with the other ordinance that didn't, were, we've tabled, there will still be an easement on the property. How far does that go beyond the retaining walls? How many? I'm sorry, these are questions that I've had residents ask me.
I would depend.
Oh, go ahead, Dean.
I guess I'm not really sure you're going to say here, but the, the ownership question after the retaining walls are replaced is something that our policy would need to address because right now, as it stands, our policy says that we don't necessarily own the walls. And so that's kind of one of the reasons why the policy recommended ownership of the walls so that the city can maintain them, and then thus the easement would be needed to maintain them for the future. So if, if this goes forward and we don't own the walls, we don't necessarily need the easement, essentially. I don't know if Aaron can chime in.
So what I was going to say is, is that with what Randy's amended motion is, is that we're just approving to do this work, we're not discussing the ownership of the walls or anything.
Okay.
At this point in time, we'll, or the easement to the ownership, you know, because it may be that whatever we decide to do with our retaining wall policy, we say that, for example, we'll replace as part of a city project if it's required, but we won't, we're not going to own them. We would rather not own them. We're going to leave it back to the property owners, even though we'll replace, that they still have to maintain and whatever. I'm not sure, in this situation, you know, since it's, we're looking at this, we're looking at this now as just one project based on one set of circumstances. What I would say is you're not, we're not requiring any sort of easement or ownership decision yet, and we won't have to really make that decision, you know, right away since these projects, this work won't happen for a little bit. But we are approving getting this work done.
Okay.
And it may end up that these retaining walls, even though they're done as part of this project, will still be under the ownership without an easement or anything of the property owners if that's what we desire to do. And that's fine. And that's, I think, something we'll have to discuss more later.
That sounds good. I don't have any other questions then.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. We've got a motion, a second. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on installation of an all-way stop control at the intersection of Third Street and Locust Street.
Well, I've got a little bit less of a heavy hitter for you here.
You mean it's not going to cost us a million dollars?
Unless that's a gold-plated stop sign. I don't, I don't think so. So staff received a request from Council Member Brock, whose, whose district this is, and for installation of an always-stop sign at Third and Locust. The request came too late to include it in the agenda for the Public Safety Committee meeting and made, which is where it normally go. But the discussion with, with, with council members, we decided to bring it directly to council to talk about it. They ran an analysis of, of the standards in the MUTCD, which, which, you know, kind of tells you when you can, when you should or should not think about adding always-stop control to the various intersections. We didn't have time to do a full traffic count of, of the intersection as would be needed to determine exactly how many hours that the intersection meets for, for the vehicle thresholds, but just looking at the average daily traffic amounts on, on West Dot's website, it's unlikely that it would meet the eight hours that would be required to, warranted for traffic volumes. However, because of the location that this intersection is at, and because there's a very high number of pedestrians that use the intersection, reduced visibility of the pedestrians due to the setbacks of the corners and parked cars and stuff, and that, that is an option in the MUTCD to consider putting in an always-stop, even if the vehicle warrants aren't met, you can put it in for high pedestrian volume areas. And this, I believe, would, would qualify for that. So I would recommend approval of the always-stop at that intersection for that pedestrian case. And you can, I don't know, you probably read the, the analysis in there that gives more information on that. But yeah, any questions or thoughts?
So were you looking for a temporary?
Initially, it was a temporary because of all the construction going on there, and it was just that increased traffic. That being said, it is an intersection that I know as per. That being said, it is an intersection that I know, as a person that works down here daily, I always avoid it because it is really, I think it is a dangerous one.
I think we had one there in the past and it was pulled for one reason or another. So.
I'll make the motion to approve the four-way stop and revisit it after a year just to see whether it's still necessary.
I can second that.
Okay, we got a motion second. Everybody understand it?
Just to clarify, you got to mark it really well as public works with flags and their bells and whistles because you were going to have problems.
Everybody. Everybody good? Everybody understand it?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Is this what you've been waiting for all night?
Yeah.
Discussion and possible action on a development agreement amendment between the City of Hudson and Atwood Holdings LLC Bella Rose Development.
All right, I'll be brief. This one does two things. We did the, the second amendment to the DA about a month ago. What this one will do is basically it accepts all of the onsite improvements, so all the interior roads, infrastructure, things like that. And then it also extends the date of completion for the north side of Vine Street on Carmichael to June 31st. We had a pre-con meeting with their construction team and the contractor, and Dean, you can correct me if I'm wrong with the contractor, basically said that, you know, it'd be a lot safer situation to get that work done once school is out and would go faster. So that's what this amendment does, accepts the on-street or onsite improvements and then also extends that construction deadline of, of what was May 31st to, to June 30th or 31st. Makes sense?
Yep.
Yeah, refresh our memory. What is going to be done?
On Carmichael?
Yeah.
North of Vine, so it'll be widened another lane, so you won't have that goofy jog as you're going northbound or southbound.
Yep. I would also, just to chime in, finish off that signal system update too with adding the self-help left turn arrow too. That would really help people turn left from there easier.
I've moved to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Motion's approved. Thank you. I don't have anything. Anybody?
Yeah, Randy, can we add discussion and possible action regarding the community liaison officer to the Public Safety Committee meeting? Just start discussing that one. The other thing that I would like to add to our next council meeting would be a discussion and possible action on the Golden Rule Initiative and also on the guidelines for using city resources for promoting projects that are not city initiatives.
Okay. What type of action are you thinking about on the Golden Rule Initiative?
Well, because you've used city resources for this, I believe that you've turned this into a city project. And so I would like to talk about how we as a city should respond to that.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, we all agreed. We didn't disagree with his initiative.
I support the Golden Rule. No problem with that at all. But we never had a discussion and possible action because it was never on the, the agenda. So we did not have a vote on.
It was on the agenda.
It was on, an update was on.
We talked about it.
We talked about it, but we did not have, but it wasn't, we didn't take any action. Because there was never any.
Well, I don't understand what action there is to take.
I.
I don't know what you're looking for.
Oh, I'm looking at, all right, so what does it mean to be a Golden Rule City? We've got this banner on the website. I'd like to see that defined. We also need to talk about, you know, using city resources. So these would be two separate items, but one would be the, the Golden Rule Initiative and how the city can participate in this, the city council. And then another item though was guidelines for using the, the city resources for, for projects.
I know that I've gotten a number of emails on it and phone calls as well. And so I do think it warrants some discussion and has this turned, evolved into something that it is in a city initiative. So I, I think there's enough questions out there that it warrants us maybe taking a look at it and seeing if it's, if it's grown to that.
I think at some point, the city administrator and city attorney need to clarify the position of the mayor and what he can and can't do as prerogative or privilege, whatever you want to call it.
I think that's, that's not a bad idea. I always see though, anybody who's elected and in that seat has the prerogative to, to run initiatives that are, that are helpful to the city. And I see Golden Rule as not necessarily the, the only, the end-all be-all, but it's a great initiative. I've heard nothing but people say, I have nothing against it.
Right?
Questioning the way that it's done, I think it was done from our leader, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and so Randy, I mean, I, I'll chime in in the fact that obviously the mayor has always asked me about these items, you know, as they kind of come forward and things. And, and I, in my opinion with it, the mayor is the only municipal elected official that's elected at the populace at large. And that as the mayor, you generally do have that leeway to, to do certain initiatives and things that, that as the, as the mayor, you, you feel are appropriate. In my, you know, guidance on this though, was that if it started to use, you know, basically cost city expense, you know, if we were going to start, you know, having to pay bills for it, if we were using, you know, months of staff time for it, things like that, then I said that that should go to the council then for approval because it's basically kind of unbudgeted expenditures. But at this point, there has been no, you know, expenses really that have gone out. Any staff time has been minimal at best. Any actual direct expenses have been paid for by the mayor. And so in, in my opinion, you know, this is still an initiative that the, the mayor is undertaking that he feels is in the best interest of the city in his role as mayor. And that we have not been, you know, spending any sort of city funds that I would say if we do, would require council approval. And so, you know, for me, up, up until at this point, and, and that I don't see, I, I myself did not have any issues when the mayor brought anything for me that said, is this okay? You know, where are we at with this? What do we, you know, that sort of thing. So my, my, you know, opinion still is, is that this is something that the mayor, you know, can be doing and has not, in my opinion, been anything that needed to come forward to the council at this point. Now, at the same time, if the council ever does have concerns or things like that, they should discuss it. And this was discussed at our, one of our December, I think our first December call, our only December council meeting for that matter, I believe. And at that time, the council did raise potentially a few concerns. The council had some discussion about it. And while there was no vote, the general consensus, which is what I have used moving forward, is that this is the mayor's initiative and that it has been supported and that he's willing to move, he can move forward with it. And unless that changes, that's where my opinion still stands.
And I believe he has established a commission of prominent citizens in the community and has also has some financial support of a couple organizations within the city.
That's correct.
And who have contributed to that initiative.
Yep.
I think perhaps the issue is that we're using a city resource. And that's, that's actually, as a member of a couple of other committees, I've tried to use before and have been totally rebuffed at the ability to use it to contact our citizens in any way. So it's, it's a little bit of a shock to see this happen this way. Not that I'm against it, but
Well.
It's something that wasn't passed, approved by the council. It's, it's a resource that's out there that we have no, it, it's a management issue.
You know, Jim, I, I don't have an issue with anybody that wants to review the, the use of the, of the public utilities or the, the utility bill. That's, that's fine. That's, I think that's, you know, fair game. To say that we've had things turned down however, that, you know, this is the only time you've seen that used, that's not accurate. We sent out the comprehensive plan questionnaire and that. And you voted for that.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's the only time. I've been, I've had other things, other committees that were trying to do that and just got absolutely nowhere.
Well, I don't, I, I can't speak for that. I, I just know that, I don't even know that we voted on it as a council for the comprehensive plan questionnaire to go out that way. I think that was just a comprehensive plan committee that did that. So it's not unprecedented.
But the comprehensive plan, that was city business, right? So maybe that's the difference.
Yeah, and well, again, I think it, you know, I don't have an issue with having a conversation about that.
Well, that's good.
About that, you know, that element.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think, this goes back to Randy's point, and Randy, I'm going to agree with you that we just need to have this clarified so it's very clear. Make it clear to the, to the citizens. This is a mayor's authority. He is able to do things like this. We've, we've just never had it happen before, that I can recall.
Yeah, I, I would also add, you know, as I listened to the citizen comment about, you know, should anybody be able to put anything in the utility bills? The answer to that question is no. Right? I mean, this, I think we can all agree, whether you agree or, or disagree with the, the mayor inserting these into the utility bills, that they were inserted by an elected official for a public purpose. Right? So, you know, let's start there with, with the conversation. Is that an appropriate use of, of city billing? Well, you know, it was inserted by an elected official for a public purpose. So when, when folks say.
It was not a public purpose. It was his private initiative which he.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Brian, you got to not allow unmuting.
So in, in any case, I mean, when the, when the comment is, we should allow outside groups to be involved in the, in the process. I think that process should originate from the council. And if there's a desire to have that conversation, I think you're on the right track. You, you have the, you have the conversation and, and you go from, you go from there. That's the starting point.
Okay. Anybody else?
The only other thing that I think, and I'm not sure if this is an actual agenda item. We heard comments about wanting folks to be able to look on the website with an explanation of how to make a public comment. So I don't know if that could be part of that FA.
FA case?
Yep. Yep, if that can be part of that.
Sure, we can certainly work with Aaron and however you want to process that.
I am a little confused by that one. I mean, can you explain to her what you're looking for? I mean, something on the website that says how people can make a.
I think maybe.
Comment.
It sounds like there's just a lot of folks that are looking for clarity on how to do things. So the things that I have heard, and we heard tonight, was it wasn't, if you were coming for the first time to make a public comment, you know, you get here and, you know, you don't know that you need to give your address, that you should probably have made your statement in advance so you're ready to go. So just some of those helpful things to make it a little less intimidating when you step up to the podium or speak on the Zoom.
Yep, that, no, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you're looking for.
Okay. That's how I took it. If anybody else took it differently?
No, it's good.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Hold adjourned.
Second.
So soon? Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.